Okay, so it is six o'clock and we're gonna get started. Karen, do we have a quorum? Is everybody here?
Doing a quick.
Pat is arriving. Okay, I'm gonna start at six.
Okay.
So, welcome to the regular city council meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, May 25th, and it's six o'clock. Karen, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Here.
Councilmember Gagliotti. Vice Mayor Lintell.
Yeah.
Mayor Kerr.
Here. Alright, we have a, we have a quorum. Can we do the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Laxier, can you start us off? We can't hear you.
And over here.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is Reverend Hellam in the house?
Mayor, he is recovering from a medical procedure and he wished us well and hopefully will be returning next month.
Okay, so invocation next week, or next month. So now it's time for general public comments. These must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time that matter is being considered. There will be no, oh, excuse me, there will be a time limit of no more than three minutes per speaker. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item and all comments will be referred to staff. Please go down to the bottom of your screen and raise your hand via the reactions. Any public comments? I see Mr. Laxier.
Sure.
You have three minutes, sir.
Okay, great. I want to thank you for having the opportunity to address the council. My name is Scott Laxier, I'm a public school teacher, Monterey Bay area for 23 years. I'm here to address my concern. I'm against developing the 17 acres of Delray Oaks. A few reasons. One is my concern about increased traffic in an already congested corridor. I would like to be focused on ways to reduce traffic and increase foot traffic and bicycling, to make it even a safer neighborhood. Also, studies show that property values increase when located adjacent parklands. The view from the Oaks condos would be changed substantially. And this, I believe 17 acres is a greater asset to Delray Oaks as a park than as a development. Green spaces encourage and are an asset to physical, emotional, mental health. One of the primary reasons I moved to Delray Oaks was to access the green spaces without getting in a car. That's important to me. And so I ask you to please refrain from developing the 17 acres green space of Delray Oaks. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments on anything not on the agenda? Karen, do you see any hands?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Alright, so on that note, we will come back to, we'll close the public comment. And we have a proclamation this evening for recognition of Pride Month. So, on that note, in recognition of Pride Month, which is June 2021, whereas the city of Delray Oaks is a welcoming community and an exceptional place to live, work, play, and raise a family. And whereas Delray Oaks has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning LGBTQ+ community, and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all residents. And whereas many of the residents and business owners within the city of Delray Oaks who contribute to the enrichment of our city are part of the LGBTQ+ community. And whereas Delray Oaks is strengthened by the diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents and business community members, all of which contribute to the character, talent, economy, and leadership of our city. Whereas while critical steps have been made forward toward full LGBTQ+ equity and equality, members of our national, state, and local communities still face discrimination, exclusion, and prejudice simply for being who they are and for whom they love. And whereas discrimination against people from the LGBTQ+ community around the world makes it imperative for cities like Delray Oaks to stand up and show support for LGBTQ+ residents. And whereas we respect and celebrate the richness and variety of cultures, values, traditions, and uniqueness as they contribute to the tapestry of our community. And whereas each of us can and should promote inclusiveness, celebrate diversity, support all fellow community members, prevent the spread of misinformation, and reject hate and bias in all forms, which will make Delray Oaks a stronger and healthier community. And whereas June was chosen as National Pride Month to commemorate the 1969 protests and demonstrations in response to raids at the Stonewall Inn in New York Greenwich Village. And whereas June has become a symbolic month in which LGBTQ+ community and allies come together in various celebrations of pride. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Allison Kerr, Mayor of Delray Oaks, do hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month and encourage all residents to actively promote, support, and help build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. Sign this 25th day of May 2021. I would like to invite everyone to a flag raising ceremony on Wednesday, June 2nd at 5:30 at City Hall. June 1st is Monterey High Graduations. Congratulations, Toriadores. Alright, on that, we'll move on to presentations. Is someone here from 211?
Good evening.
Okay, so would you mind if we had you go first? We have all the water gentlemen here together and have those two go second. Are you, are you ready?
Thank you, Mayor Kerr. Yes, we would be delighted to go first. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Castagna. I'm the president and CEO for United Way Monterey County. And I'm here tonight with my colleague Kalissa King, who oversees our 211 system. And if you'll allow me to share my screen, what we'd like to do is provide some updates about 211 and what we are doing, how we're serving the community, and leave you with a little more information about exciting resources in the community. So just a brief review of 211 and what it is. We want to talk about some of our current initiatives, as well as our role in disaster relief, and then share with you some data about who calls and what they're calling about, and solicit your support, because we want Delray Oaks to be part of our network of support. And we also want to preview the new rent assistance program that we're coordinating. So just a brief review of what 211 is. United Way Monterey County is the license holder for 211 here in Monterey County. 211 is actually a national resource accessed via the three-digit dialing code 211. In California, it's organized county by county, and in many counties, you'll find that it's the United Way that helps coordinate it. People can dial 211 for help 24/7, or also reach us by text to 898-211. And then, of course, we have an online searchable website. And the idea is that somebody who needs help in some sort of health and human services area, but doesn't know who to call, can find more information by calling 211 and describing what it is they need. Our professional call specialists are trained to help assess the needs and match those needs with eligibility of services that we have listed in our very comprehensive database. And then they provide that information in the form of referrals to the caller, who can then follow up with those resources as appropriate. Just a quick snapshot of the call volume we handle and have handled in the last couple of years here at 211. And again, 211 is a service, one of the many services that United Way Monterey County provides. You'll see here on our bar chart in blue, our call volume, the monthly number of calls we handled per month in 2019. And that year, a busy month for us, was about 1,000 calls. Then the orange bars reflect the activity in 2020. And you'll see a real jump in our call volume starting in March. And that continued and went really up and down, but mostly up throughout the rest of 2020. And then the red shows what happened the first quarter of 2021. And the, you'll see, we are literally off the charts, over 7,000 calls in March. We, I'm happy to report, actually, the call volume is shrinking. And it's, you know, it's a good and a bad indicator. It's good because I see that people are using 211, but not so good because it reflects great need. And I will say that those red bars really show what happened with the vaccine support we were providing in the first quarter of the year, as well as the new rental assistance relief program that we are administering. And how by using 211 as that focal point, that point of entry, you'll see that people knew to call, and that really drove up our volume. We will talk a little bit about some of the initiatives and what we're able to help people with, both during normal times, as well as what happened last year in the pandemic. And I'm gonna turn this next section over to Kalissa King.
Thank you, Katie. So I'll be diving into some of our special initiatives that we've been hosting through 211. The first one that you'll see noted is diabetes awareness. We know that diabetes is a huge concern. And so we were able to partner and develop some really great resources for our 211 database. So those can be accessed, of course, through calling or texting into 211. But also, if you visit our 211monterreycounty.org website, there's now a new diabetes icon. So that's to support folks that may have diabetes or be looking to prevent diabetes. We also were able to support during census outreach, serving as an information hub to answer any questions and dispel myths around the census. We then have also been able to assist the Kinship Navigator Project. So this is specific resources for kinship families. And so we've been able to provide data, but then also work with local partners to get kinship families aware of this website, so kinshipcareca.org, so that they'll be able to navigate resources specifically designed for kinship families. And then, of course, COVID-19 response. One of our top days in 2020 in relation to call volume was just after the shelter in place order went into effect. So we've been able to share information throughout the pandemic in relation to what is masking, what tier are we in, what does that mean? And then up to the vaccine as well. We've been able to answer questions around that. And so really just general COVID-19 response. And then these are some of the initiatives that we're still assisting with. The Great Plates Delivered Program is a great resource, getting seniors connected to meal delivery service. And we've been able at 211 to do the intake and screen residents for eligibility, then pass that information over to the county so that eligible residents are able to get connected to that meal service. Then with the vaccine, we've been able to partner and offer a vaccine registration assistance hotline. So folks can call in 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. And if they're seeking vaccine registration assistance, our call center specialists are able to get them signed up for an appointment so that they're able to then get vaccinated, which we all know is very important. Then with rent and utility assistance, if you actually looked at that graph that Katie showed you, you'll see the last three months of 2020 were some of our highest call volumes. And then, of course, this first quarter, we've seen a lot of call volume. And a lot of that is due to that Rent and Utility Assistance Program first being offered at the end of 2020 and then starting again in March. And so right now, our 211 call center plays a critical role in that, is that folks are able to call in and get an application filled out on their behalf, so they don't have to do, put the information online. We're able to get them filled out, and if they're eligible, of course, then refer them to a participating agency. And I know Katie will be diving a little bit deeper into that process as well. And then affordable broadband, we know that internet is essential, and internet is also very expensive. And so for, we're working with United Ways of California in order to get folks, low-income families connected to low-cost internet options. So we're doing that through texting internet to 211-211, but also visiting broadband. You'll see the link right there, but so that folks can get screened for eligibility in order to see what internet services may be available at a low cost for them. Can we have the next slide, please? Perfect. And we've been able to partner with the Office of Emergency Services throughout the pandemic in relation to that COVID-19 response. But also, when we think about the wildfires, so if we think about last year's wildfires, we were able to share a lot of critical information to folks. I know we were getting phone calls around, should I be evacuated? Where do I go if I am evacuated? And so we're able to work with the Office of Emergency Services in order to understand the evacuation standards, so that be warnings and orders, and then direct folks, if appropriate, to where they needed to go if they were evacuated. So the shelters and centers at that point, those are the main concerns that folks were calling in about. But really getting folks plugged in to resources when they need it the most. We're always there, like Katie mentioned, 24 hours a day, and in over 225 languages as well, to meet the needs of our community. Next slide? Thank you. And so here we'll see some of our 2020 call volume and just our call data. And if you look on that left-hand side, I want to direct you to the percentages, because I think that's really telling to what we were seeing. And I know we saw that a little bit in the bar chart. We had 19,268 calls, and that was 109% increase. So a huge increase when we think about compared to 2019. And then we'll see also significant increases in relation to texting, and a very significant jump in relation to web searches on our 211 website, on the United Way website, but then also 211monterreycounty.org, where we have our resource database so that folks can self-navigate as well. And if you look on the right-hand side, you'll see what folks were calling about. So I think that it's great, we're able to see how many people are calling, but it's really important for us to understand what needs are they calling in about. And so we'll see that 58% of those calls were in relation to basic needs of housing, utilities, food and transportation, 7% income and employment, 5% mental health and substance use, 9% legal consumer and public safety, 7% healthcare, and then 5% individual, family, and community support. And so on the next slide, I wanted to be able to show, specific to Delray Oaks, what were folks calling about? And so when we look at these percentages, we see that 69% were in relation to that housing, utilities, food, and transportation. So more than what the county average was. And I wanted to break that down, because I know that that can feel like a really big category. So just to understand what were the top needs in that category. So there was a tie for first place, being rent payment assistance and electric service payment assistance. And then in second, followed with water service payment assistance. So really, a lot of needs expressed around rent and utility assistance. We then also see 8% in income and employment. We didn't see any for mental health and substance use. 6% legal consumer and public safety, 4% healthcare, and then 8% individual, family, and community support. And so, like we've mentioned, 211 is a resource really designed for when folks don't know where to turn or what might be available in the community. They can always call 211, knowing that we'll have reliable and up-to-date information and that we can direct them wherever they may need to be directed to. So thank you for listening, and I know Katie was excited to dig into the next piece.
So, and before that, I just want to share with you a little bit about our funding model. Since we founded 211 in 2009, we have really depended on a variety of public and private sources. So our local hospitals, many local cities, the county, specifically the social services and health departments, as well as private foundations and corporate foundations, have all been instrumental in keeping our and building our 211 infrastructure. So we have submitted a request to the city of Delray Oaks to join this illustrious list of supporters. And we would welcome your support for the 211 infrastructure. I do want to talk now a little bit about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And I want, and really tying that to funding, for some of these very specialized projects where we do enrollment, specifically around the rental assistance and the COVID vaccines, we do receive additional grant support. But it's the everyday calls that is, you know, whether it's somebody seeking a domestic violence shelter or legal assistance or senior care. All of those kinds of things are just our day-to-day, really our bread and butter. And we want to make sure we are always there with the latest information to help our community. So the Rental Assistance Program that we're currently administering is a great example of how we've applied that 211 infrastructure and really the the faith and trust that our community has in knowing they can call 211 and safely get reliable information. And we have used that to help the county coordinate rent and utility assistance. This current program is really meant to prevent homelessness, and we are all concerned about that. And so we are actually basing it on a pilot project we did last fall with CARES Act funding. And so I'm sharing this out just to show how we were able to distribute rent assistance really throughout Monterey County and provide quite a bit of coverage of our community by having 211 be the portal for that. So you'll see the rent assistance as well as utility assistance. And so we've built a software platform on top of our 211 information system that helps us track and process support for residents. We're replicating and expanding that with the current Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And this process diagram shows how residents can access that help. We have a total of $28 million that have been allocated to the county from state and federal sources. And people can access that rent and utility assistance by calling 211 off to the left or to the right. They can apply directly through our online application portal. And we will then assign that application to one of our partnering agencies. We are working with 14 nonprofit and municipal entities to help process and deliver that relief. And just a note about the rental assistance for paying back rent. Landlords need to agree to forgive 20% of what's due, but the program can then pay 80% of past due rent from April of 2020 through March 2021. So we also just today launched a specific application process for landlords. And we'll be trying to help process maybe at a higher scale for landlords that manage multiple properties. And everywhere we everywhere we go really with this program, we're looking to reduce barriers and make it as accessible as possible. Our materials are typically provided in English and Spanish. And we started doing some outreach flyers in some additional languages as requested. So this is just a snapshot of how 211 helps make this really wonderful bounty of relief available to more people within our community. And that is really the snapshot we wanted to share with you today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Well, thank you both. Let's start with the council. Vice Mayor Lintell.
Yes, I would like to thank Katie and Kalissa for an outstanding presentation on the capabilities of 211. We're very fortunate that we have this available to us. And I personally called 211 many months ago regarding something about COVID. And they gave me the proper route to follow, and I got excellent reliable information from them. And I thank you all so much for that. And thanks again for your wonderful presentation.
Mr. Gagliotti?
No questions. I just want to thank Katie for the presentation. It was very informative. Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson?
No, I also have no questions, but thank you for a great presentation.
Ms. Shirley?
Thank you, Katie and Kalissa, for your presentation. Kalissa, you actually answered my question that I had. I was gonna ask you to dig down into that data, and you gave it to us, so thank you. And, you know, Katie, I was able to get your updates during COVID for the electeds. And I just, you know, I was so grateful that I knew you were there. And the fact that your organization could handle that call volume that increased so much, I think it really says something about your organization, and I would love to support what you do. So thank you for being in our community. I appreciate it.
And I too agree. I send out regular emails to the majority of constituents in Delray Oaks. And I sent out 211 and encouraging folks to take advantage of your services quite a few times over the last year. And I look forward to, I know you guys are doing an ATU ordinance tracking or something. And so that's just another valuable service for the community, so thank you. Are you open to going out for public questions, if there are any?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Any public comments, questions of our 211 ladies? Karen, do you see any? Okay, well, on that note, thank you very much for sharing. And I know that we have a finance committee coming up in a few weeks, and we'll take a look at your request.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Take good care. So next, Paul Shudo, I'm wondering, would you mind if we had the rate increase last?
That's fine.
Okay.
Whatever you need.
If we could do the overview of the city's water resources and allocations first, that way the folks can leave afterwards, and we get you a little longer.
Great, Mayor. Couple of questions, Madam Mayor. Do you want Marina Coast to go first, or the district to go first?
I'm going to turn this over to our acting city manager. I had no idea it was going to be this big. So let's see what he has to say.
Oh, it'll go quickly.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and residents and guests. In February of 2021, we held a strategic planning session with the elected officials and staff of the city. And we set our strategic objectives through July of 2021. One of those strategic objectives was to give an overview of the city's water allocation and resources, both what we have now and what we're looking at in the future as we look to develop four-door properties and other properties in the city. So this will be a basic overview of where we get our water, an amount of water that we have, and the capabilities we may have from a very high level of possible development within the city. I would say you guys could arm wrestle to see who goes first. However, we're on Zoom, so that probably won't work. David, if you would like to go first, why don't we just start there?
Sure. Can Karen run the PowerPoint? I didn't set myself up for screen sharing. I'm on an iPad, but...
I believe Randy's got the PowerPoint, and he'll help you out.
There we go. Perfect. And Marina Coast can go first.
Do you want us to go first? That's fine.
Well, it's your presentation.
Alright, so, alright, David. Well, everybody, so before we get going, I just want to introduce myself. I'm Rem Schirzinger. I'm the new general manager at Marina Coast. I have with me today Patrick Breen, our Water Resources Manager. He'll be doing the presentation for you this morning, or this afternoon, talking about your allocation. In general, just to set context around Marina Coast, Marina Coast currently serves roughly 38,000 customers in delivering water, wastewater collection, and recycled water. We serve the communities of Marina, half of Seaside, Delray Oaks, portion of the city of Monterey, and then parts of Monterey County like East Garrison. So we're gearing up to meet our obligations in the ORD community as the ORD community continues to develop and carrying forward the allocations from FORA and ensuring that our customers, like the allocations from FORA and ensuring that our customers like Delray Oaks get their full allocation of the water that was part of that subdivision. So with that, I'll turn it over to Patrick, and he'll take us through the allocations, and we can answer questions back. Patrick?
Thank you, Rem. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Patrick Breen. As Rem said, I'm the Water Resources Manager for Marina Coast Water. And this is an overview of the city of Delray Oaks' water supply and allocations. If we can go to the next slide, please. So this next slide is, whoops, is somewhat busy, and it's busy because it has a lot of information. What you see here is you see in yellow, or the mustard color, is our current service area. And this service area is somewhat Balkanized and kind of cut up, and there's some islands and not necessarily your typical Lafco designation of an annexation, but it was a result of a settlement agreement whereby we've agreed that we are going to annex areas of development of the former four-door as they are developed, as opposed to our original Lafco application to annex all of the development parcels within the or on the former four-door. As you can see at the bottom, we have the Delray Oaks portion of it. Also on this map, as you will see, the, in the blue outline, is the various water sub-basins of the Salinas Valley. So you have the Seaside adjudicated basin, which the city of Delray Oaks overlies. Then you have the Monterey Basin, which is to the north. And then also farther north, you have the 180-400-foot aquifer basin. Currently, Marina Coast is developing the groundwater sustainability plan for the Monterey sub-basin in conjunction with the Salinas Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And it's divided into two management areas. Marina Coast is taking everything essentially north of Highway 68, while the Salinas Valley is developing the planned portion for the southern portions of Coral de Terra, those areas. It'll be one plan for the Monterey sub-basin, though. And then also, we are, portions of our service area overlie the 180-400-foot aquifer to the north. And so we are a party to that GSP as well with the Salinas Valley sub-basin. In addition to those two items, you see our well locations on there. And if you look to the north, wells 10, 11, and 12 are central Marina wells, which are deep aquifer wells that were deepened in the 90s due to seawater intrusion. As you go east, you see wells 29, 30, and 31, which are legacy Army wells. They're wells that are in the 180-400-foot aquifer. And then it skips to well 34. Well 34 is actually a refurbished Army well that the district refurbished and essentially re-drilled a new well into the deep aquifer, and we named it well 34. And then well 35, which is down into the actual Salinas Valley, is a 400-foot aquifer well. So next slide, please. So we have an agreement between the city of Delray Oaks and the Marina Coast Water District that was signed in 2020. And basically, it was to formalize the existing rights and obligations regarding our water and our recycled water between MCWD and the city. We agreed to the 1993 four-door Water Resources Agency Annexation Agreement, which is basically an agreement between the US government, the Army, and the Monterey County Water Resource Agency, which provided the Army the ability to pump water from the Salinas Valley groundwater basin and to apply it to all of the lands of the former four-door. The agreement also agrees that we will honor the four-door reuse authorities potable and recycled water allocations. And it allows transfers between land use jurisdictions within the, who have a ORD water allocation from the FORA process, assuming they're going to use that water on the former four-door, of course. And then also, it contemplates, and we agree, that we will endeavor to develop the water supply to meet those potable and recycled water allocations if there's any sort of issue to where we weren't having them available. And obviously, that would be, you know, the cost recovery would need to be an element of all of that, would be, we would develop those water supplies. Next slide, please. So this shows the Delray Oaks ORD supply, and it shows it's divided into potable groundwater and then also recycled water. And so the city of Delray Oaks has 243 acre-feet of year of potable water, which is currently groundwater, and then also 280-foot of recycled water, which is recycled water that's coming all the way from M1 Water Plant. If you go to the bottom, you will see the 6,600 of potable water. That's the water that was contemplated and afforded within the 1993 agreement between the Army and Water Resource Agency. And then the 1427 is a derivative of the Regional Urban Water Augmentation Project, EIR, which was EIR that was done in conjunction with FORA and contemplated the, or considered the 2,400 acre-feet of additional water that will be necessary in order to build out the base reuse plan for the former four-door. So the 1427 is the recycled water portion of that 2,400, and there's 973 acre-feet of water that we still are planning right now. We haven't identified exactly, exactly what type of flavor that water will be. We don't know if it's going to be an injection project similar to ASR, or perhaps a surface water, or it's up in the air at this point, but we are working on it, and it's something that we're actively pursuing. And so the next slide. And this next slide is what we have for demand for Delray Oaks for the next 20 years. This comes from our, to be adopted in June, hopefully by our board, Urban Water 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. And what this shows is that shows in 2025, there's going to be 31 acre-feet of water demand in Delray Oaks. And that's generally, it's an RV park that was forecasted by FORA. And then in 2030, there's also some housing element that's coming into there. There's 50 housing units, and then there's also some industrial. And those, like I said, those forecasts are kind of legacy forecasts from the FORA, four-door reuse authority that we're using to provide these. And so you see through 2035, it levels off at 238. And essentially, that's it in terms of the high-level overview. And Rem and I would be happy to take any questions you might have.
What I would like to do is run through each and then go out for questions, if you don't mind.
Sounds fine.
So I don't know which presentation is up next, but is it Dave or Paul? Dave? Great.
Off to unmute. And also with us is Stephanie Locke, our Water Demand Manager, who is in charge of the permit window, the allocation process, and all things local to building, anything that requires water. So hopefully, we're in a good position to answer your question. Next slide, please. Actually, you can go to the next one as well. So here's water demand by city inside the Calam main service area. This includes the Calam system that stretches from, actually from the four-door boundary to the south, down to Yankee Point, and then out towards Hidden Hills. And as you can see, Delray Oaks is about 1% of the total, whereas Monterey is 32% of the total by comparison. Next slide. Within Delray Oaks, this is a breakdown by the type of use, and you can see something that will be no surprise to you all who live there, but you're primarily a single-family residential community with 81% of your water use. By the way, this is the last water year. Our water years go from October 1st to September 30th. So this is usage through September 30th of 2020. Multifamily, relatively small, commercial and industrial, with a couple of the locations that you have is about 18%. Public authority does exist, but it rounds to zero and other rounds to zero. And you can see in the bottom left-hand corner, it's approximately 107 total acre-feet. And then the numbers that you see after that are the number of connections. So hopefully, that aligns with what you think your population and fabric looks like. The next slide is the Calam service area. So you have the dubious distinction of being served by both Marina Coast Water District and California American. And who knows, down the line, with the potential condemnation action, it could be us. But you can see here your existing boundary that's within the Calam service territory. So as you look, you can see that General Jim Moore Boulevard comes into a point right at Canyon Delray. And actually, South Boundary Road is up and out of the Calam service area. So that little strip of land between South Boundary Road and really a straight line that parallels Upper Ragsdale is Marina Coast as part of the former four-door. Right about where you see the words Canyon Delray Boulevard is that triangular piece that I think one of your public speakers may have been alluding to earlier. But generally speaking, our jurisdiction covers your current urban boundary and less impact on the four-door lands. Next slide. And so the way we've been running the water business for decades is we make allocations of water to the jurisdictions, and then they in turn make land use decisions and allocate water to projects. We found ourselves flailing for permanent replacement water supply for a number of years. And through the course of that time, cities like yourself, who's at a full circular zero of available water, but even Monterey and Carmel by the Sea are extremely limited. Pacific Grove was extraordinarily limited, but they did their own local water project to irrigate their cemetery and their golf course, the Golf Links, which freed up an available supply that could only be used at existing metered connections. No new meters could be set under the state's cease and desist order, but that does put them in a little better stead for remodels or lots that have had meters for a period of time. The dilemma that, for example, Seaside has, they have a lot of water, but a lot of the land they slated for development was in redevelopment agencies with raw land, no meters. And so the inability to set a meter under the current regime is problematic. Obviously, it makes it worse to also have no water to allocate. Next slide. So this is how we approach the permitting process. And I guess I'll just suggest, whoever's running it, go ahead and click on the first one. So allocations to land use jurisdictions were fixed, and they were fixed in the 90s. So it took quite a long time for cities to get to zero. In your case, you've been at zero for a number of years, and this was the water that was allocated to each jurisdiction for reallocation that I mentioned earlier. Next slide. We also allow for conservation credits to offset increased use. So if there was a permanent abandonment on a site from Calam or a, back when we had a lot more conservation potential through the replacement of dishwashers and clothes washers and so forth, you could create a credit on your site that you could repurpose for a renovation or a new use. Next slide. We also have what's called an onsite credit, less so to the residential homeowner, but more so to commercial properties. You will see, I don't know, we could take Stone Creek as an example, but I think, you know, a really good example that's outside your jurisdiction, but the American Tin Canary, years and years ago, used to have nightclubs and comedy clubs and a lot of activity. And they asked us to come in and document what their current use was, recognizing there are economic cycles. And so we can do that for properties that are concerned about where they're headed, or if they've got documentation of prior uses, we can occasionally establish an onsite credit against which you can pull a building permit and a water permit. And then lastly, next button or slide. Next, please. Oh, you got it. I'm sorry. Are the small new supplies, like, so the Sand City Dcell Plant created a new resource, part of which was allocated to the unlawful diversions from the river, and the remainder became available for Sand City to allocate to new projects. There's, that's similar to what Pacific Grove did with their local water project, and Pebble Beach Company, all the way back in 1992, established product, a project for recycled water. So these are the four ways that you can build anything currently under the current regime. And what we do, or what Stephanie's office does, is compare a building plan pre-project and post-project. And if the water use is going to increase or intensify, you have to demonstrate where that water is going to come from. And normally, it would be from the jurisdictional allocation, but you are severely constrained at zero and are unable to do that. Next slide. And we'll jump to the next one. So what we're really focused on right now is getting out from under the cease and desist order. Any infill development you want, any accessory dwelling units you want, any new commercial spaces, are all going to have to demonstrate where the water is coming from. And really, the easiest source at this point, we think going forward, is a new permanent replacement water supply. We're in the process of evaluating two with significantly different outcomes. One is pure water expansion, pure water Monterey expansion, which will get the community about an additional 20, 250 acre-feet. And the other is the Monterey Peninsula Water Supply Project desalination component, which is about 6,200 acre-feet, keeping in mind that a typical single-family house only needs about a tenth of an acre foot, and multifamily significantly less. And it's like, you know, a little more than a tenth. Let's call it two tenths of acre foot, depending on your climate and the size of the home. What this graph shows you is the two possible new supplies are the horizontal lines. That's how many acre-feet is the left-hand axis. The yellow line is the peninsula-wide expected growth in water use based on Ambag's 2022 regional growth forecast. So your city, just like every other jurisdiction on the peninsula, had one to three conversations with Ambag about what your expectations were. Those expectations were rolled in with the other five cities on the peninsula. And Ambag came up with a growth forecast in both population and job creation. And we assigned water to both of those and said, okay, based on our understanding of what people need per capita and what businesses have used traditionally, this yellow line is the 30-year extension of Ambag's 20-year growth forecast. So what that tells us is both permanent water supplies being evaluated will have more than sufficient growth for all the communities on the peninsula. The only downside is when can it happen? And as you've seen, there's been a lot of fits and starts. Next chart, please. So let's talk a little bit about the Calam Dcell Plant, you know, to be located in North Marina with slant wells in Marina, encountered a number of difficulties, primarily with the Coastal Commission, and then somewhat retroactively with the county permitting process. I'm just going to focus on the Coastal Commission with the next slide, please. So they got their permission to build the project from the Public Utilities Commission back in September of 2018. Got to the Coastal Commission a little over a year later for a hearing. A staff report was released. The action was deferred. It was an all-day hearing with no action at the end. The action hearing was rescheduled for September of 2020 with no notable change in the staff recommendation. The company pulled its application. They resubmitted a revised application in November of last year, and then received a notice of incompleteness, which the company has addressed in part in March. Most recently, another letter went in, I believe it was just last week or the week before. So they continue to try to clean up the application to the Coastal Commission, which could in fact lead to a final complete application to be filed some point in time. Originally, we heard this summer, it may be later than that. The important thing is that The important thing is that the takeaway should be that that project has not cleared its social justice issues with the people of the city of Marina. A number of technical issues related to design and outfall and so forth. And next slide. As a result, the Pure Water Monterey Expansion has picked up some steam. We first started delivering water. Paul is there today. Kudos to Paul. Started deliveries of water that the district began purchasing in February of last year. And then to Calum for delivery to customer service in September 1. The problem with Pure Water Monterey Expansion, well, there are no problems, but the problem with the way the state board looks at things is we know that when you look at the total water supply available on the peninsula, there is a legal component. And there's an illegal component. Illegal would be withdrawals from the river in excess of a legal water right. Or withdrawals from the seaside groundwater basin in excess of the triennial step downs or triennial limitations imposed by the courts. There have been very few of the latter, but the river remains the concern. And what the state did is they said, we're assigning all the water that comes in from any of your new projects against your unlawful diversions. So there's no, we don't deem any of Pure Water Monterey Base project to have any new water available to the cities. We're going to count it all against the unlawful diversion. So it's that last increment of water supply that comes on that will create any water for growth and housing and businesses. So Pure Water Monterey Expansion, next slide. As I mentioned, we began deliveries. Where we are today is there's two additional deep injection wells under construction expected to come online in the November through February timeframe that will allow that project to operate at full capacity and in fact, possibly even over capacity, if you will, or fully leverage the capability of the of the project, which will provide a little bit of short-term comfort water, if you will. Because after December 31st of this calendar year, the Carmel River allotment is dropped to a very low level, the legal level that Calum can withdraw. So even for the next two to three-year period, the community is going to be stretched thin. And so you won't see any ready call for growth. However, Monterey One Water did certify the supplemental environmental impact on a pure water expansion. We've been meeting with key parties to advance that proposal. I think we're becoming high, more highly confident that the pure water expansion may be the first project get to completion. Which if that is the case, would be kind of a 24-month timeline from the day that we say go or that Monterey One Water says go. And that day is not yet easily within sight, but it could be a couple of months away. So, you know, all in, I think we're looking at anywhere from 26 to 30 months for that new water supply. And that's really, in Del Ray Oaks's case, the primary source of any new water for growth in the existing Calum service territory. I wish I had better news to report, but I can't foresee additional supplies coming in unless we get some some latitude with our specific ask for housing, which frankly, in this current dry year, we're continuing to pursue. But I would, I would not green light it today until we get through another winter to see what's going to happen with the local supply. So that's, that's it in terms of describing the current set of handcuffs that the city's in. But I'm optimistic on where we'll be, as I said, in 26 to 30 months. And that concludes my presentation.
Hey Dave. Is there a third presenter?
Well, Paul is scheduled to present on the potential rate increase.
Right. Mr. Hoin, do we have, is Mr. Headley going to be joining us or?
I'm looking to see if he's here. Karen, do you see him?
Yes, I am here.
There is Joe and Lisa. Yes, Mayor Joe Headley is, of course, our contract city building official. And he has probably the most, or at least one of the most knowledgeable backgrounds on our city wells. And if you wanted to just kind of give a quick update on what wells we have and their capacities and what their status are, that's what he will be presenting.
Well, I can give just a brief sliver of our current well down by the corp yard. The other wells are a little more protracted, but as far as new water resources, I did start looking into this through a couple of years ago, when we emptied out that that yard of the trailers and saw what future purposes this might hold. So I did go through the process of determining the location of the well, what the regulations are in regards to the use of that well. We did undertake a testing of the water quality, the performance of the well. And it was determined to be part of the seaside basin, which would allow us a de minimis use of that well, which is a very small amount of water. But it was water that could be used at that particular site. Now, once those final determinations were made, it was staff's intent to bring that to the council to make a determination what could be used on that site. And then the pandemic hit. So that kind of got shelved up until this meeting because we thought it was outside staff's purview to suggest a direction to use that water on that site. Because of the resources it would require to build there, we thought our best course to recommend a council would be some kind of RFP to let that out to the public to determine what would be a good use for a public benefit to use that well, that would both provide a sustainable resource that could be built down in that area. But those are more protracted discussions about how that RFP or something that a future council day could be used. But up until the start of the pandemic, we did determine that that's a viable water resource that is restricted to use on that parcel. So it's not something we can pump and use on other properties elsewhere, but as a singular source, that one particular well, we did do our due diligence to determine that's it's a viable resource for that particular property located at City Hall site. Beyond that, wells are, we're a pretty small town. Our other well located over at the at the landscaping place is also going to be restricted to that. We've not undertaken the cost that would be incurred with doing a further pump test, see the quantity that can be produced. We would kind of suspect that's along the lines of the same aquifer. So we wouldn't want to tax that beyond what's currently being used. But those are questions to be really discussed at the council level. You know, I took it upon myself, it was my job just to determine the suitability of that water, the quality and the performance and what the regulations governing that might be in terms of what we could pull out of that. And in the de minimis use, that gives us up to five acre feet, which is really more than that site could produce in the way of some kind of building or structure that could be determined through, you know, council action for an RFP or something like that. But and again, that's because that's not listed, I think, on the agenda for that. There is a viable source there, but I think that's would be the council to discuss how to move forward with something like that. That's all I had about the well. It's just that one singular item. When you're looking at that macro picture of the water resources, which is rather large, that's that one sliver for the well down below. That's all I had.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Hoin, any other presentations?
Mayor, no, that's just a quick overview of the two water providers we have. And then also the one well that we have enough information to provide information to council that is meaningful.
Okay, wonderful. This is a wonderful overview. So I'll go to the council for any questions, comments, Vice Marilyn Tell.
I have no questions. I would just like to thank David, Ram and Patrick for an outstanding presentation and thank you for joining us this evening. That's it.
All right. Mr. Gagliotti.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions on the Marina Coast presentation. One, there was talk about annexation for us. We Delray Oaks is actually not going to be annexed. Is that correct? Or is that, is that that new information? When you said that that we were, that all of the Fort Ord properties were going to be annexed, it kind of, you kind of assumed that we would be part of that annexation. Is that correct?
That's correct, council member. So as soon as you make the call for the water, then we'll go to LAFCO annex the parcels in as you need them in. So the settlement agreement was only that those parcels that are currently receiving water that we would annex them as part of the settlement and that as development occurred, so along yours, along the south boundary, as you guys require water, we will then begin to annex and start to deliver.
Maybe, maybe my, my understanding then of the term annexation is we would, we would be maybe, okay, annexed, meaning you guys would serve water, but we would not be members of Marina Coast. Is that correct? Is that, is that a true statement?
No, the population that would be within the, within the annexed area would be voting members on within Marina Coast.
That's a new, that's a, that's a new, that's, that's new information. That's a new understanding. When did that change?
Never did.
Well, no, it has.
Okay. Well, I can tell you that as soon as you are annexed into the district, any population, those parcels that are within the district have voting rights with regard to our water.
Okay. Then the 238 are potable and then, and then we're using the term 142 of recycled water. That term used to be augmented water. Recycled water kind of connotes similar to the Pure Water Monterey project, that that's a recycled water, which would then be a potable product. The recycled water that would be delivered, the 448 feet of the recycled water from Marina Coast would not be potable. Is that a true statement?
Yes, correct.
It's so, so it would still be considered augmented water.
Yeah, in definition only, council member.
It's going to be Title 22. It'll be clean enough, but we have to process.
The difference is going to be that they'll take it off a tee from the pipe, so it doesn't have a six-month residence time in the ground with an environmental barrier. So same, same water at the starting point. Probably drinkable, I mean.
Yeah. But that's interesting that, so that, that will be the Pure Water Monterey project. I'm sorry, Dave, I didn't catch up. But Pure Water Monterey project is, is, is going to be the deliver, or at least the allocation from Marina Coast going into the Pure Water Monterey project will then be the, the augmented water supply, the 142 acre feet, right? Could we, could we put it back in the ground and then pull it out and get 140? I mean, that delta is huge. Seaside's doing that. I'm, I'm on the basin, you know that. And, and seaside is kind of doing that is that they're, they're swapping augmented water for potable water taking. Could we, is there an opportunity to do basically that water swap? Put, put 142 acre feet of augmented water at X price and then pull it out at potable water and use it?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to peel back the stick my question. Yeah. So, so back to an earlier question that Rem was alluding to. So contractually, you're currently obligated to receive service for those new ord areas from Marina Coast Water District to de-annex from them would come with a price because there's some infrastructure in the ground, obviously. And there's a CIP to extend the arterials out.
Yeah.
But the concept that you just put forward is, yeah, it's doable because, you know, you overlay the seaside basin, we've potential to inject in the seaside basin. It's doable, but you'll have a lot of friends in the room trying to negotiate that one.
Okay. All right. I thank you for that. I mean, that's an absolutely fair, fair question. But it is, it is literally the delta is tens of millions of dollars and seaside's, you know, going to be reaping and reaping the rewards for that. So in value. There was one other question. I think that's kind of it. On the recycled water. Thank you. This was, this was like the mayor said, this was very, very enlightening. I, I really enjoyed these overviews and, and appreciate you guys making an extremely complex kind of Rubik's cube digestible. So thank you.
Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, great presentations, both. And council member Gagliotti kind of touched on some of the questions that I had. But as I look around the room, I see a lot of the residents, this can be very confusing. And I think that at the very, very basic level, the key takeaways are this, that out at our Fort Ord property, Marina Coast Water District will provide our water to potentially do what we want to do out there. And now with the expansion project that the SEIR has been approved and we've now got a ways to, to move the project forward and have actually become a reality, will provide potential for us in our existing city limits where we can have water through the district. So those are really the key takeaways for our residents that are out there that might be confused by a lot of what you just heard. And that's it. Thanks.
Ms. Shirley.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for your presentations. Again, this is just great information for all of us. I, it was really interesting to see how many, how much water we use in our city, just 107 acre feet and how much we're allotted in our Fort Ord lands. It's more than double. And so I'm thinking, what are we going to do with that water? I'm wondering how, how confident Marina Coast is in being able to still deliver that amount of water to, to our Fort Ord land.
I think we're, it's safe to say that we're absolutely confident that we can deliver.
Okay, great. Yeah. It was just informative. So thank you. And Joe, I want to thank you too for being here to, to talk to us about our wells. I always, you know, question that too. So that's it for me. Thanks.
I agree. This was a fantastic kind of Monterey Peninsula Water 101 for anyone wanting to understand more, to have all the players here together. I also wanted to note the 107 acre feet that our entire city uses. So that, that gives everyone kind of a context. The other thing that I just wanted to mention in all of this conversation, Mr. Stolt knows and Mr. Shudo knows, the Monterey mayor, the seaside mayor and I have reached out to Monterey One Water about the possibility of, or the feasibility of capturing stormwater from Lake Roberts before it goes into the ocean. And so that could also be, there's state water funding that will be coming down. And this has been a project that we've talked about for a little while. So that could also be something that could be used within the city. So we'll keep you up to date on that. But I don't have any questions. So what I'd like to do is go out to the public and see if anyone has any questions. Mr. Allian.
Yes, thank you, Dennis Allian, Delray Oaks, Portless and Seino's Drive. I think it's important that we get some clarification regarding. You know, we have a water allocation that for the former Fort Ord property that will come from Marina Coast. The question that I think that the public or citizens need to thoroughly understand is who is responsible for making the water connections and what the potential costs might be for bringing water, for example, down along South Boundary Road to that RV park that's out, the RV park that is still under development. Nothing has really happened out there. And so I think we need to clarify that. And I didn't, I didn't hear it. Maybe it was mentioned, but I didn't hear it. So I'd appreciate somebody addressing that issue. Thank you.
Mayor Curd, you want us to take them, do you want us to take questions one at a time? Or do you want us to take them at the end?
You know what? That makes sense to me. Yeah. So if someone could answer Mr. Allian's question.
Mr. Allian, this is Rem Schertz here. So the question I'll try to address as far as our capital program. Right now Marina Coast has the South Boundary Road pipeline slated for 23, 24. As I mentioned to the city manager, Mr. Hoin, we can move that as necessary to meet development as the city deems it's necessary. We currently have design money in our current budget to start beginning to design that project so that it's sitting on the shelf, ready for the city when it is necessary. The project will be paid for by development. So as the city has its developers, they will pay the capacity fees necessary to move that project forward. And I believe right now in the capital program, and Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's roughly uh, move that project forward. And I believe right now in the capital program, and Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's roughly two-point-six million dollars to construct.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Karen, do you see any?
Uh, Mayor, it looks like, if I'm not mistaken, Jim Clark is gonna raise.
Mr. Clark.
Hi, um, thank you Scott for the, the summation.
Could you please let everybody know who you are and where you live?
Sure, uh, Jim Clark Via Verde Delray Oaks. Um, thank you, Ms. Kerr. Um, uh, Scott, thanks for the, the summation because I, I was wading through mud, trying to follow you guys. I got bits and pieces and thanks so much uh, for that because uh, it, it only makes me appreciate the uh, depth that John Gagliotti has had for this subject over the years. Um, now, I guess my one basic question that I have is the use water demand of a hundred and seven acre feet. When was that measured? Because um, uh, if I'm getting, if I, if I've got, I'm pretty sure I've got that right number. Um, there's a difference in my mind between the first ten years I lived here and how people used water. In the last ten years we've lived here, when the people up in Sacramento and wherever were saying you can't draw from California, from the, the river. And so we all had to reduce and we all had to conserve and we stopped washing our cars every week and people have gotten rid of their lawns and people have stopped having vegetable gardens and people have stopped having lawns and we haven't been able to put in second bathrooms in most of these houses. So I want to know before we get too carried away with what water's left is what's that demand based on? Is that demand based on previous years? Uh, before we started this or in the last ten years when we've all been, you know, pulling together to try and conserve as much as we can? Because I want to go for when we've got a lot to live off of, not just when we're barely getting by. Thank you.
So um, did you uh, hear him? Jim, at the end you got uh, very quiet. Uh, the question I heard was um, what years were the demand numbers based upon?
Right. Um, it's just based on a single year, uh, the last, the most recent last year. It's based on consumption by both jurisdiction and type of use. Um, there's also what's called production, which is when it comes out of a well or out of a D cell plant, you're producing it. And the numbers don't always completely align due to line losses and non-revenue water and trucks hitting fire hydrants and things like that. But um, it's, it's a most recent current year number. It doesn't also compute uh, intellectually on, you know, your large, single-family users. Those also include any separately metered small homes. And so, you know, like a big home in Carmel Valley might be uh, point two-five acre feet a year. Whereas uh, a typical Delray Oaks, single-family residential home could be point one. And some of the even smaller homes, and I'm not sure how the, the Oaks complex is metered, but they'd be even smaller because, you know, there's a lot of single uh, and couples there. But uh, in general, water demand on the peninsula as a whole, um, you know, all six cities in the unincorporated area has been in decline since two thousand and oh, actually since really two thousand and nine, we were about three thousand acre feet less in use peninsula-wide, which is significant. You know, that's um, just under thirty Delray Oaks. So um, and everybody's been pulling in together. And what we've noticed in that curve is it's, it's flattened in the last five years. And so a lot of the conservation activities have kind of hardened. Um, and it's tough to go further. Uh, high-efficiency washing machines can still make a dent. But we've kind of, um, I won't say maxed out, but we've, we're starting to attenuate. We're starting to level off. That being said, um, everybody in all different jurisdictions is doing the same thing. And I often hear, well, you know, once we get a new water supply, and then I can get a lawn again. And the hard part with that is when your water rates are three times what they were ten years ago. Um, you may be unlikely to replant a nice Midwestern turf-style yard and you may want to stick with uh, you know, drought-resistant planting and, and so forth. So you can carry that argument all the way through with what's happened to water rates. You know, the two things that have been causing all that conservation are behavioral. You know, people choosing to make changes and economic and um, you know, some of them are hardened through technology. You replace a toilet, you replace your showerheads and so forth. Um, but you chose to do that or you had to do it upon sale of a home. Those things are kind of stuck in the system. So you won't see a rebound from that. I've, I've had a lot of conversations with people talking about, well, I can take longer showers. I'm like, well, more power to you if you want to, but um, you're doing it with water that's at least twice as expensive as it was, you know, five, six years ago. So I, I don't know how it's all gonna play out, um, when we've got a permanent water supply. But we, the district, don't really expect a big uptick. Um, and in a primarily residential community, there's legislation on the books being talked about in Sacramento right now, trying to impose a per capita, a gallons per capita per day limit statewide, which would only further reduce what we use. You know, we'll see where that leads, but it, it's not gonna free everyone up to just open the faucets and uh, let it pour, let it pour.
All right. Thank you for that. Um, any other public comment?
Not seeing any.
All right. So I'm gonna come back to the council and actually, we just want to say thank you. Thank you so much. It was uh, invaluable. Uh, like I said, one-on-one to the regional water um, nuances. So thank you, gentlemen, for taking the time to come and um, educate us.
You're very welcome, Mayor Kerr, and thank you council members for your time and we're always happy to come back.
Welcome to the peninsula, sir.
Thank you. It's great to be here.
Yeah. All right. So without any further ado, Mr. Shudo, who has been very patient, I thought he was going to be part of this group, uh, my apologies. Um, on that note, let's hear about uh, rate increases.
Thank you, Mayor Kerr, council members. My name is Paul Shudo. I'm the general manager of Monterey One Water. And I'm gonna share my screen, but first, uh, Mayor, if I may, um, I did get a little confused early on in the council when you referenced water gentlemen. And no offense to uh, Mr. Scherzinger, Stolt or Breen, but I've never heard those two terms together before. Sorry, Dave. Sorry, Rem. Anyhow, if it's okay, I'm gonna share my screen. And I have a brief PowerPoint to talk about our proposed monthly rate increase. Um, I know there was some discussion earlier on uh, Pure Water Monterey, and I just wanted to make the point, and I'll make it later in this presentation as well. The monthly rate increase we're talking about now is not, none of it will go towards Pure Water Monterey. It is specific to our wastewater facilities. What you see before you is actually the way it looks very, right now, this time of year, uh, with the flowers blooming. This is our primary and secondary wastewater treatment plant out in Marina by the landfill. The reason why we show this pictures and others is I just want people to get an understanding of the infrastructure, the magnitude of infrastructure that's necessary to convey, treat and reuse the wastewater that we, we get. So first of all, just real quick on who we are. So Monterey One Water was formed in nineteen seventy-two and previously known as Monterey Regional Water Pollution Control Agency. We have ten member entities. Therefore, ten board members. And you'll see the, the logo a little later on, but everything from Moss Landing to Castroville, Salinas, and then Marina through Pacific Grove. We serve on the order of two-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-sixty thousand people in the community. And on average, we get about seventeen million gallons of wastewater each day. That's conveyed to our facility out Marina by twenty-nine pump stations and about thirty miles of pipelines. Our staff are highly certified, state-certified operators, maintenance people, uh, instrumentation people, laboratory, and the plant is manned twenty-four-seven by a grade-three uh, wastewater treatment plant operator. And that's mandated in our permit. So a lot of this background is just to have a general context on what, why we need this rate increase and then what the process is, what the public process is to hear from our customers. There is a joint responsibility in the sewer system. So the city sewer system, when you're at your house and you're doing dishes, doing laundry, water flows out of your house to the pipeline in the street. That is collected by the city or um, the seaside sanitation district or whatever it may be. There's one charge for that. What we're talking about is a charge specific to the Monterey One Water Sewer Treatment and Conveyance System. Um, what you see before you are the logos of our ten member entities and therefore ten board members. And so what do we spend our money on? These are some things that are happening now or have happened recently. The ones on the uh, left and the right are treatment processes at the treatment plant, which is about thirty years old. And frankly, in a marine environment, wastewater environment, things do deteriorate uh, at a rapid rate. So we try to renew as best as we can. In the middle is some work at one of those many pump stations that we um, own. You can see the proximity to the bay right there. So it is always necessary to have a certain redundancy and certain, um, certainly beyond redundancy, making sure everything works twenty-four-seven. Oh, so I guess I jumped ahead of myself. Happy thirtieth birthday. I know many of you that have been in the community for a while, hey, that plant's brand new. We just put it in. Um, it is thirty years old and, like I said, things do deteriorate. Generally speaking, rotating equipment like pumps, motors, blowers, they last fifteen years. Some of the instrumentation in the same timeframe. Concrete and steel in this environment, maybe twenty to thirty years. So that constant um, reinvestment into our infrastructure is necessary. So why are we proposing the rate increase? Well, I'm sure you've probably guessed it by how I've been talking thus far. Most of it is for capital reinvestment. All those assets that we all own, the community owns, because we are a public entity. Um, the treatment plant, our outfall, the pump stations. The value, if you were to replace them today, is somewhere in the tune of six-hundred million to seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. So we're talking three-quarters of a billion dollars spread around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand customers. Once again, we constantly need to renew. There are certainly personnel obligations as all public entities have. We are, we have to have highly trained, highly certified individuals doing what we do. Um, and then of course, the financial strength of the agency. You may have heard our reserve levels that, which we have in the bank for, well, issues like a pandemic last year or if something were to break or whatever it may be, are substantially low compared to other entities like us. So we would like to build those up over time to be in a stronger financial position. So if and when we go out for debt financing, we have a better bond rating and then therefore get a better interest rate, hopefully saving money for all of our customers. So those are the three areas where this is going. I've seen a number of letters to the editors and other things which certainly understand their points, but I don't think it's reflected necessarily in where the money is actually going to be going. Um, I know I said this already. I, I want to say it again because it's very important. These rates are specifically to the wastewater and collection system ser- services we provide. None of these funds will go to the um, agricultural irrigation or reuse that we are doing, nor to the potable water recycling or the Pure Water Monterey Project. We treat those as separate enterprise funds. So we don't subsidize back and forth between any of them because frankly, they serve different customer bases. And we need to be very careful of that from an accounting and finance perspective. So uh, no pun intended, but this, I guess, is the money slide. This is the proposed monthly rate increase that is in our Proposition Two-eighteen notice. Um, to give a little background, we brought about five different rate scenarios to a subcommittee of our board who discussed it, um, debated, and we then brought three of those uh, rated scenarios to our full board. This is the one they ultimately voted on for the Prop Two-eighteen notice. I've also seen uh, outreach out there that's saying, well, this is a done deal. Why didn't you talk to us beforehand? It's not a done deal. This is the public process that's been identified as state law, Proposition Two-eighteen. We develop what our proposed rate increases and why we think it's necessary. We send notices to all of our customers. There's the opportunity there to protest the rates going, hey, we don't think you need it or whatever it may be. There is that opportunity. Ultimately, and we'll get to it in the, I think, the next couple of slides here, that we're gonna have a budget hearing on June seventh in which the board actually makes the decision on what rate increase, if any, to move forward with. Um, please note that the twenty-four fifty-five on the current monthly rate is truly the monthly rate. We send our bills out every two months. So if you're going, hey, that seems a lot lower than what I see. It is. It should be about half. And this does not include the cities or other add-on rates for your collection systems. We realize this is a large rate increase. Percentage-wise, very large. Dollar-wise, large to a lot of people, but I think more reasonable when you look at what services we provide. And I'm gonna go into that right now. But first, our rate history. Like I said, we're about thirty years old and, you know, the boards and management in the early years truly tried to be as cost-effective for our customers as possible. And frankly, there was a new treatment plant. So for twelve years in a row and fourteen out of seventeen years, there were no rate increases. And that's represented by that flat line that you see before you. So the blue line is our rates. And you can see where they've gone up a bit since, you know, the two-thousand, seven, eight, nine, ten timeframe. What the green line represents is what I feel is prudent utility management, which is consistent, small rate increases. What that is, is about five percent per year. So you can see where, where we're at now at twenty-four fifty-five is far short of if we had done small, consistent rate increases the entire time. So in essence, we have all frankly, been paying probably less than we should have for the last thirty years. And if you look at the area between those two curves, that represents about two-hundred-and-ninety million dollars that frankly, the agency did not collect and could not reinvest into our system. Then we go to some rate comparisons. So we look at um, not only locally, you see there Las Palmas or Carmel Area Wastewater District, Gilroy Watsonville, but also some of our um, comparables in Northern California. Um, similar size agencies, similar um, levels of service and functions. And what you see is three of our member entities in the green lines. That is the combined rate of what we're proposing as well as the add-on rate for the city. Even though it's future, two thousand twenty-one to twenty-two, generally speaking, our rates are on average below the median of everyone else's twenty, twenty-one rates. So I think that is just a reflection of how aberrantly low our current rates are and that over time, we need to increase to be able to provide the expected level of service of conveying and treating the wastewater in a red, not redundant, but in a resilient manner. So we don't have spills. So we don't have outages of all of our facilities. So I want to get to the public participation because that is truly important. Um, and in a significant part of Proposition Two-eighteen process. It is not a done deal. The board voted on what to send out for consideration and we are constantly receiving protest votes from our customers. The culmination of it is at this budget workshop on June seventh. The culmination of it is at this budget workshop on June seventh, where staff, we, will report to the board how many protests we had, and and what that represents as a percentage of our customer base. There's also the opportunity to continue to send those protests in, come to the public hearing via Zoom, not in person, and voice your concerns, or frankly, email. So at that point, hopefully, our board will discuss and come up with some decision on what rate increase scenario to move forward with. So by no means is this a done deal. This is still just part of the public process that has been defined by the state, and we are following as best as we can. That's all I had, so I can either stop sharing and answer questions, or if you want me to keep the slides up there to bounce back and forth to, I can do that.
Well, why don't we ask the council first and see how much bouncing we do? Let's start with Vice Mayor Lindell.
Oh, and thank you so very much for your comprehensive presentation, I appreciate it. I have one question. Twenty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. What type of structure does that recommend? What, what does it comprehend? I mean, is it multi-family dwelling, a condominium, three bathrooms, one bathroom? What constitutes the structure for that, please?
Great question, and thank you for that. The twenty-four dollars and fifty-five cents, which is current, is, that's our current residential rate, so a standard house. Now, there are a number of ways to do utility billing, there's a number of different models. What we use is every house is twenty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. And I often hear, well, that doesn't seem equitable. If I have a two-bedroom, one-bath house, I pay twenty-four fifty-five. Person down the street has a five-bedroom, four-bathroom, they pay the same amount. And that's true, it is not equitable when you look at it in that sense. It's sort of like the same model as a postage stamp. Whether I mail something to you, Ms. Lindell, or someone in Boston mails to you, the postage stamp is still the same amount. Another way to go about it is fix your count in a, in a house or a business. There are many different ways to look at it, this is just the way that this agency historically has done their billing. I'm not saying it's the absolute right way, but it is the way that we've been doing it for thirty years. And I do want to bring up that, as you see, the thirty-six oh five, forty-three fifteen, those are the maximum proposed rates in those future years for a standard residence.
Thank you, but would you ever consider, to me, it would be a more equitable assessment, and that would be by number of bathrooms and number of kitchens and so on? Would you ever consider basing your fees on that?
So if I may take my agency hat off for just a second and put my personal one on. I entirely agree with you, I think that is more equitable. There are a number of different models, as I mentioned. There's some agencies in the state that actually bill based on how far away from the treatment plant you are, and how much infrastructure you use. But I truly feel what you just mentioned is probably a good balance. And what we are going to do, we're going to request our board to do a more comprehensive rate study, to look at those different models, and what that would mean to our customers and for ourselves. That would not be this year, it would be in future years as the board votes on it. But that is something our CFO and myself have definitely been putting on in the plan to move forward with. So thank you very much for that question.
Okay, and when, like, I realize the board has to vote on it, et cetera. But when are, would you propose this to the board? How many years are we talking about? Are we talking about two years or ten years before you would even consider this?
Our plan was, once we get, hopefully get through this Proposition Two Eighteen process, we would bring it to the board, the, the concept of a rate and fee study, like I just mentioned, either this fall or winter, to see if they wanted to engage a consultant to do that sort of work, possibly for next fiscal year or the following one. So by no means ten years out, we want to be able to address this sooner rather than later.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for being here and your excellent presentation, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and if, if I may, one thing I forgot to mention is certainly the board understands that this increase will impact people. And they instructed staff to put together a customer assistance program. We have done that, it is actually going to our board for approval this Thursday. And the design of it is to help, to assist low-income or potentially fixed-income individuals that meet the PG&E low-income program criteria, that we would then have the ability to, depending what the board votes on, pay or credit someone's account that meets the criteria for one billing period per year, or, you know, I guess that's one-sixth of the bill in a given year. So the board was concerned and wanted to provide some sort of access to funding for low-income individuals. So sorry to do that segue.
No, before we go on to Mr. Gagliotti, that, I wanted you to talk a little bit about that program. And so we'll know more about, we have a lot of residents that are on fixed incomes. And so if, so what I'm hearing you say is if they qualify, is it the CARE program? The PG&E CARE program?
Exactly, and that, as you well know, that program has a number of criteria that people can meet, and if they meet that, they will qualify for ours.
So we'll know on Friday if it passes?
Yeah, and also, there's, there's a couple of decision points for the board, if I'm not mistaken. One is funding level for that program, and also a decision point is whether they can do the one billing cycle per year or for a two-year period. The reason for that is just wanting to make it as available as possible. We don't want the funds to run out in the first two months and leave everyone hanging. So there's those decision points that we need to present to the board.
And then, when do the fees, so if this were approved, when would the fees kick in?
Whatever rate increase may be approved by our board would be effective July one of this year.
This year?
Yeah.
Great, well, let's, sorry about that, I just wanted to ask about that.
I appreciate it, these are all things I should have mentioned, so I appreciate the prompting.
No, it's all good. So sorry about that, Mr. Donaldson. I'm sorry, Mr. Gagliotti, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Paul, it was excellent. I have a couple of questions. What, what is the percentage of Monterey One assets that are fully depreciated now?
So I love that question, when we start diving into that, I'm going to mention, so we are about seventy percent depreciated.
Wow.
Now, if you look at, remember those comparables I brought up?
Yeah.
Not the local ones, but the ones throughout the state, there's eleven agencies that we look at. On average, those agencies are forty-six percent depreciated. So you got to the, the heart of one of the many issues is we frankly have been over-depreciated because we have not been reinvesting over time enough. And that is shown by our comparables.
And in on that, what's the, what's the current Monterey One annual maintenance investment?
So I'm going to answer that a couple of different ways, if that's okay?
Yeah, I know, I know, it's a couple.
Yeah, so one way to look at it is, we looked at, actually, on average, over twenty-five years, because people are saying, oh, hold it, you guys have been investing a lot. On average, over twenty-five years, we have invested in capital projects. So what is that? Purchasing new equipment, rehab, all that good stuff, major maintenance, about three-point-nine million dollars per year. To put that in perspective, this rate increase is predicated on what our engineering, operation, and maintenance departments have put together in a capital plan showing our needs range from ten to eighteen million dollars a year.
Exactly.
Now. So I hope that answers the question you were, you were looking for.
Well, it does, I mean, we're at, you know, I'm leading you down a garden path, but I mean, the thing is, I'm trying to get that it's not a linear, like, you can, you can quote the three-point-nine million dollars over, over the last twenty-five years, but, but, but there's been, it's been a chunky investment, and where, where there's been almost decades where there's been no investment, and then there's been try to catch up. And we're kind of in a situation now, is that we have to be in this catch-up. And so, I mean, if we're, we're thirty-six percent, or no, we're thirty-four percent greater depreciation than industry standard. And I even thought forty-six percent was high, because I thought it was closer to thirty, you know, but when, when we were kind of in these kind of things. So the thing is, is that we've got to go double, we basically have to make an investment of almost double just to get on par in order for the system, now, now I'm drawing kind of conclusions, and you can, you can check me if I'm wrong. But in order for the system to basically just function safely, we need to basically double, we, we need to make a double of the investment that we have been making in the last five years. At least in the last five years that I've known of, is that?
At least double. There have been times, certainly two thousand twenty was hard for everyone. Our capital investment dwindled, so at least double, up to three times what we've been investing. You're absolutely right. And, you know, I don't mean to say that our, our people are not maintaining and doing the best job they can with the money we have, it's just...
But to me, quite honestly, that's been quite the problem, is that, is part of the problem, is that since we've been actually doing, well, we, Monterey One has been doing so much kind of, I would say, superhuman, you know, fixing of things and keeping things running on a shoestring, everyone just assumes that, that that's the status quo, and that, you know, there's no need. And, and so it's almost, it's almost that they, the problem has been kind of exacerbated because you guys have done such a good job at maintaining the system with what we've got, so. Well, anyway, okay, all right, well, thank you very much, Paul.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, well done, Paul, in laying out the current situation and why we need the rate increase. And your answers to the previous question really tell us why it's even more urgent than just what you presented in the, in your presentation. To, to our residents, I highly encourage you to reach out to Monterey One Water through the, the ways that was presented in the, the presentation, and/or show up at the, the meeting on the seventh of, of June. As a member of the board, that type of feedback is going to be invaluable to me as we take a look at this situation. So I encourage everyone to do that, and that's all, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Shirley.
Yes, thank you, Paul, for your presentation, I appreciate it. I am happy that you're here to talk about this, because I feel like when I talk to residents about this, they're alarmed, and once they get a little bit of information, it sort of brings them down a bit. So I think as much education as we can do is going to be important. I know you mentioned, and I, and I was at the meeting where the board was presented with lots of different rate options, and this is the one that they chose. I'm wondering, clearly, you can go back to the board, and then they can reevaluate this, so it wouldn't necessarily be this specific rate increase, but it may be a different one that they might choose, is that still possible?
That is absolutely possible, and frankly, understanding that possibility is why we're asking for the rate scenario vote to be on the seventh, so we can adequately provide a budget for adoption by June twenty-eighth for the next fiscal year, but it absolutely could.
Okay, okay, that's great, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I asked my questions earlier, so let's go out to the public. I see Dennis Ali on.
Let me start my video. Okay, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I don't see my clock yet, but I'll start talking. Dennis Ali in Fort Delray, Fort Los Encinos, Delray Oaks. First of all, Paul, I know you're not, that mirror, that picture behind you is not crooked, it's just the way the camera looks.
Exactly.
Put up that slide again that shows the rate comparison if, without the acceleration and with. I think it showed a, the period where we held the rate steady for, what, ten years?
Dennis, I don't think we can go back with the clock running.
Yeah, I can't, I can't share my screen with you, but you're right, Dennis.
So all I wanted to do was try and help people that are listening and understand that there was that ten-year period. When I first came on the board, I noticed that, that, that word, that we had not raised our rates, and that raised alarms when the engineer started talking about the backlog in capital improvement programs. And the thing that people, I hope people begin to appreciate, is that all of these programs have what we call a life cycle. You know, you, you put in a piece of equipment, be it a valve, you know that water is highly corrosive, and that over time you are going to, that valve is going to deteriorate. And if you don't take action to replace it, you can have catastrophic results. We can have sewage spills, we can, we have electrical problems that can generate a failure of a pump at a critical time. We had the issue of that outflow. Remember the issue with the outflow, where the erosion of the sand had eroded the the pipe that leads out to the, right along, out to the ocean? All of these things crop up, and if we don't invest the capital at these critical times along the way, it's going to cost us more money. One of the things that you may have overlooked, I don't know that you did, but operating costs. For that ten-year period of time, there was, the staff was actually reduced, and there were probably instances that didn't happen that should have happened, as well as capital improvement projects that didn't happen. So I wanted to underscore that, and maybe Bill Ragsdale Cronin, who was on your staff for a long time and witnessed that, might be able to comment on that as well. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you, Dennis.
Uh, Bill?
There we go. Hi, Bill Ragsdale Cronin, fifty-eight Carlton Drive, Delray Oaks. And as Dennis alluded to, I spent a good thirty, almost thirty-nine years working at Monterey One Water back in the day. Paul knows what I'm going to say. One of the big difficulties the agency's had financially was, it was a grant-funded system and a grant-funded plant. So that nine, I think it was nine-thirty was the rate back then. That was the cost to treat the water. It didn't have any component of rebuilding, any sinking fund, any capital replacement fund, and it had no bond payments or no loan payments built into it, because the plant was grant-funded. Or I'm not sure it was a hundred percent, but pretty close. I'll let Paul figure that one out, it's been too long, my, my brains are getting old. But reality-based was, most treatment plants that are built are built with grants, bonds, and loans, and there's a component to pay those back, and the theory behind it is, is you get a thirty-year bond, when the thirty-year bond is up, you reissue it to rebuild all the stuff that you had to rebuild in the thirty years, and it just slides forward, and yeah, costs increase as you go along. And also that the agency was created over a long period of time. I mean, from the time the first pump stations in Pacific Grove were put in, stations thirteen, fifteen, the remodeling of seven, the Monterey Pump Station were in eighty, early eighties, because I came on in seventy-nine, and those were being built. And then the treatment plant, ninety, I can't remember, thirty years ago. So you've got a wide variety of ages on some of this equipment as well. So yeah, there's a lot of stuff out there, there's a lot of stuff that's worn out, and, you know, I mean, we've all been kind of looking at, when I was working there, we were all going, when are we going to really do a significant rate increase? And it's tough, you know, it's hard. I've got two rental properties that's going to hit me in the pocket, but, but I also know if they don't do it, we're going to have a lot more spills and a lot more problems, because spills are way more expensive than investing in the infrastructure. When you're looking at fee of fines of a hundred dollars a gallon and higher, you don't even want to go there. So that's it, just wanted to kind of throw my five cents in. Nice seeing you, Paul.
Good seeing you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comments?
See, Jim Clark's got his hand up.
Mr. Clark?
Jim Clark, Delray Oaks, thank you, Paul. And understand that, having met a businessman myself... And understand that having met a businessman myself and run a business that had to do with computers and getting those turned over and helping people understand that.
Paul, can you hear him?
Uh, he's a little soft, but I can make it out.
Okay.
Throw the other one in here and see if that helps at all. Still not, huh?
I can hear you, Jim.
Okay.
Clock is gone, it's okay.
I understand capital reinvestment. Did you say you're a public company? I mean, you're a government agency.
We are, we are, we are a government agency, a public, a special district, a joint powers agency.
Okay, so being that you have all these wonderful government retirement funds and I don't know if, if yours is one of those that your people get to retire at the full salary that they were working out there for multiple years. As a guy in the private sector, that's offensive. So that was listed on your, three of your things that you're looking to collect money on, and I know it'll never happen, but golly, I wish somebody reexamined the retirement funds and make it more like the private sector. And I think the amount of money that you'd be putting out in personnel obligations would go way down, much like our cities are experiencing here. But yeah, I tell you what scares me as a 68-year-old, I'm looking at this and from your chart, it looked like from 2011 to 2012, the cost went up 48%. And then in this next five years, it's going to go up 45%. My question to you as a 68-year-old, what's next? What's, what do I need to plan for the next five years? I mean, do I need to keep working for another three? Thanks.
Mayor, may I just make a couple of comments in regards to that? Yeah, so, um, thank you for the comments, Mr. Clark. Yes, we are a PERS agency, we do have multiple tiers of PERS in our organization. Certainly, the lower tiers, I shouldn't say the lower tiers, the, the less expensive tiers are more well-funded. The older tiers, you're right, they are a burden on the finances of the agency. However, from a fiscal perspective, we can't just switch because the way PERS works, if we were to switch, we still have to pay those unfunded mandates within the old PERS accounts. So it's sort of like double paying. So unfortunately, we aren't in a position to even discuss that without adversely affecting the finances of the agency. In terms of, you're right, there's some significant increases in these next five years. What I've always been a believer on is, we need to have a 10-year capital plan and a 10-year financial plan because without a roadmap, it's hard to know where you're going. That 10-year plan, which I didn't present here, obviously, if you looked at the proposed rate scenarios, they are lower percentages those last two years. It's still going to be probably 7%, 8% in the following years. And the reason for that, the primary reason is, yeah, we're going to have enough money for our capital reinvestment, but electrical costs, which treating and moving water uses a lot of electricity and chemical costs are all increasing far greater than CPI. There, what we're seeing is 10 to, well, I shouldn't say that, probably 7 to 15% increases on a bulk of our O and M expenditures. So I don't want to sugarcoat it and say, oh, we're going to be doing CPI in those last five years, but by no means what we're seeing here, that 10-year financial plan shows more consistent like 7 to 8% increases in those out years. So hopefully you don't have to work those additional three years.
Sorry about that, Louise.
Good evening, I just wanted to thank everybody for all the presentations that were, are given this evening. And I wanted to make a comment, my personal experience that I am disappointed that in the past, the agency had not planned well. I've been on the board of a number of homeowners associations and we all know that the importance of having reserves or if you have your own home savings accounts to cover expenses when your roof needs to be replaced in 20 years, you have to realize that you, you know, either you're going to pay a big whopping now or you start saving for it ahead of time. Having said that, I lived up in Washington State, I left there nine years ago, and when I left, I was paying, my sewer fee was what is anticipated to be my sewer fee in three years or four years. I was paying $108 every two months. So I was, you know, pleasantly surprised to have half the sewer fee when I got back down here. But I also understand that, that for a number of years when I lived here before, 30 years ago, obviously, I got away cheap and we're now having to pay the price. And I wish there was a way to make this. It's, it's got to be done, I don't know if there's a way to make it, can't make it a more gradual, but somehow a step it slightly different. So that the impact is, is, is not as significant immediately. And I do appreciate the thought of, of having a tech cares type program for, for those who are, who are adversely impacted, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to come back to the council. Does anyone have anything else before we let Paul go enjoy his evening? Seeing none, Paul, thank you so much for the innovative work you have done on behalf of all Monterey One Water residents, and we look forward to more. So thank you for hanging out and doing everything you're doing.
Thank you very much for the time to present, and if anyone has any questions, please, please contact us. So thank you very much, Mayor and Council members.
Thank you, Paul, have a good evening.
You too, bye-bye.
Bye. All right, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda, does anyone in the public want to pull any item? Seeing none, anybody on the council want to pull an agenda off of the council or off of the consent agenda?
I, I'd like to pull item B4.
Okay. And I would like to pull C6 and make a quick comment about the, the list of city contracts before we go into that. I just want to say, big thank you to Jeff and the staff for pulling this together. I will be agendizing a larger conversation about the contracts and how we process them and all of that, hopefully with this fiscal year amounts, probably during the summer. So any other items to be pulled? Okay, Mr. Donaldson, if you'd like to start?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just real quick, probably best Chief Burke one, but I looked down in your report and I saw the citations issued. And it looks like the majority of what we've done for the year was issued this last month. And I was just wondering, is that because you've had an increase in, you know, vigilance with, with parking citations? Why the big increase, I guess?
Thank you, Councilmember, it is because of that, we, we are slowly working our way out of COVID, we were very understanding of that, we did not want to put extra pressure on folks. We wrote literally a handful of citations for a year. Things, I know people are still struggling, we don't write citations because we're looking for money, there's no money to be had in citations anyway. It's about doing our job and making sure that our, our partners at the airport are happy and, and our residents. And we do get complaints on parking, probably parking and animals, that's our, that's our two go-tos. And it's important that we, we begin to, to, to go back to normalcy. And, and we're, we're not trying to give people a hard time, but we are trying to start getting back into the normal routine and doing our jobs, and one of those jobs necessary is parking.
All right, thanks, Chief, really appreciate it, and I like that balanced approach, thanks for everything that you do.
Thank you, sir.
So Scott, we can put it back on the consent? No shifts, okay. Um, so as far as C6, which is the budget adjustments. Karen, can you give us a status as to the, the total remaining balance for financial contracts? Or contract, our RGS financial contract?
Okay, so the original contract was for $131,000.
Yep.
And year-to-date as of April 30th is $129,391.
Okay, so thank you for that because as I was reviewing all of this, the financials show we still have $30,000 in that, so it hasn't caught up. So I was wondering, so I was concerned about giving an additional, so basically this $50,000 is to cover May and June?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mayor, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Based on conversations with Roberto Moreno, our accountant, RGS, we have come to the conclusion, and this was after press, of course, and work we're doing today. It appears that we'll probably need about 30 for financial, which would free up about 15 for the city manager selection process. And of course, that would be $5,000 more than what the amended budget looks like in this document. But we've been working that all week to work through that, that problem as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year.
So I want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, what I was going to suggest is that that 50, that we still approved the $50,000 to RGS, but 30 of it goes for financials and the 20 goes for the city manager hiring.
Yeah, and that is a workable solution, Mayor, I've been in discussions with Roberto and we should be able to do that.
So, so for the rest of the council, we approved, I thought it was $15,000 to $20,000 for the city manager hiring process, that never made it over to the budget. So now is the opportunity to be able to make sure that the money is there and we're not talking about additional funds. Am I correct in that, Jeff?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, okay.
And as, as just, I'd like to say, as the, as the budget amendment shows, we're actually looking, we're not taking any more new money and projections are that we'll finish the year with a larger budget surplus, as a matter of fact.
Right, and, and that's fantastic, I just want to make sure that RG, we don't have a surprise at the end of the year when we get a big RGS bill. So, uh, any other questions, comments about the consent agenda?
I made a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
We need to go on to the public first, but then I'll be right back.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Nope, that's okay. So any public comment on any item under the consent agenda? Okay, I'll pull it back, Ms. Lintel.
Well, hold on, I have a question, I have a clarifying question before you make your motion. So, but, just, so can we just put that item back in? I mean, we, you pulled it.
Right.
Well, but, but it's not, we're not reallocating it, well, maybe we're reallocating, but the, but the net of it is zero. It's, I mean, we're, it's, it's all, the, the budget amendment covers off, how it gets sliced and diced is really, that's internal, correct?
So I want to ask Alex, so it's the same amount, but I do believe that the city manager report has 50,000 going here. Do we need to make a motion about the division?
I don't think so, Your Honor, it's on and it would be part of the consent agenda, so the fact that it was discussed, you can do that two ways, you can just pull that back into consent or you could do it individually. It's at your pleasure as long as each and every item is part of a motion to approve.
Okay.
So then can I make the recommendation to, to the maker of the motion? Pat, just accept the consent agenda as is and the internal slicing, so, I mean, just, if we can, let's put the item back in.
Just say so moved, yeah.
So yeah, right.
Okay, I, I moved that we accept the consent agenda as is.
I second.
Okay, Karen, could you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye, all right, so it passes unanimously, thank you for that little detour. So we move on to old business, consider broader discussion regarding Integral Innovation, Inc., lease termination for Public Works Building, Mr. Roy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, at our April meeting, if you remember, there was an item, an action item to consider revising the Public Works property lease between the City of Del Ray Oaks and Integral Innovations to provide some economic relief for their business during the COVID-19 pandemic-related economic downturn. A couple of key points from that staff report, which is in the packet that I will just go over and inform the council of some other conversations that the city attorney and I have had regarding this. Integral Innovations has been a partner with the city since 2017, during their time through cannabis taxes, sales taxes, fees and permit fees. They've put close to $1 million into the city's general fund and they have been a very professional and good partner to work with. In early 2019, their business was expanding quickly, there was no room anywhere, commercial properties in Del Ray Oaks for them to expand. We went into conversations with them about renting out the building in the Public Works Yard in our corp yard. We signed a lease for approximately $48,000, $4,000 a month. That is ending here in, I believe, June, this coming June. The vaping-related crisis hit their business and then the pandemic hit their business, they had to let go most of their staff. And they have been reorganizing with new products and new marketing strategies, and they're hoping to turn their business around, although that remains to be seen. They've been struggling and we approved a four-month deferral of rent payments. We were supposed to revisit that and we didn't because the pandemic continued much longer than expected. And they have been struggling to stay in business ever since. In early 2021, we reached out to see if they would be interested in renegotiating that lease and getting out of that lease so the city could take control of the building and use it for public works. We do need storage for equipment and other machinery. They sent a letter requesting they end the lease and receive some back rent relief and still hopefully remain in business with the city and recover. And the city, in the spirit of trying to be a good partner with them and help them recover, because there are significant amount of deferred cannabis taxes that are at stake. We brought forth this staff report, they are offering to pay a reduced rent of $1,000 a month for the 12 months, totaling $12,000 for the term of the lease. And they would start paying that in July of 2021 through June of 2022. We would regain control of the Public Works Building immediately upon the execution of the lease. It should be noted that the company also built approximately an $8,000 temporary storage building in the back of our police department at the beginning of this lease. So all told, it would be about $20,000 worth of benefit to the city, however, the reduction of rental income would total $36,000. In speaking with the city attorney, there are two separate issues here, there's deferred taxes, of course, and there is a lease. And trying to keep those as separate as possible because of the due process of both of those particular situations. The staff's recommendation is still that we accept this offer, we execute an amended lease, and of course, understand that there are other opportunities to regain deferred taxes through liens if the business is not able to recover with the pandemic. I will refer this to Alex if he has any further comment on that.
Nothing to, to add at this point, I'm happy to answer questions.
So Alex, I want to make sure that we're really clear as we head into this conversation. We are to only talk about the lease and we are not to talk about the taxes, that's how I read it?
Right, the action item in front of you is Right. The action item in front of you is, uh, an agreement to terminate the lease.
Got it. Okay. So let's go out, uh, let's start with Ms. Shirley.
Um, I don't have any further, uh, questions or clarifications. I'm, I'm actually in support of this. So, thank you.
Um, Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah. Bottom line is this company has been struggling. I mean, you heard the, what the city manager had to say about it and, you know, they're trying their best to make their business work. I mean, I've spoken with the CEO and they're, they're trying to get back to where they were. And at a certain point, they provided a lot of revenue for the city. And I think in this case, uh, it, it, it does make sense that we revise this lease.
Thank you. Mr. Gagliotti?
Um, I'm just, uh, I want to support the motion for, for a lot of the, I, I have, I have a lot of reservations about, about this, but, um, um, I think it's probably just best, or I think the city's best course of action is basically just to kind of, you know, maintain as, as, as friendly business partners we possibly can. So, so I'm going to be supporting, I'm going to be supporting.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Lintell?
Yes. They've been good tenants and, um, hit hard times like many of us in the community have. And, um, I think, uh, that we need to support them and I'm voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I'd like to hear from the public. Um, anyone have any, uh, comments or, or, yeah, public comment on this item? All right. I am not seeing any. I'll bring it back to the council. Uh, Ms. Shirley?
Um, I say we move to, uh, move forward with this proposed lease agreement for Integral Innovations.
I second. All right. So any, um, last conversation from the council before we vote? Okay. Uh, Karen, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Your councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintell?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. So it passes unanimously. Um, so let's move on to new business and consider appointment of four candidates to the planning commission. Um, so before we get started, what I'd like to do is, um, I want to acknowledge Mr. Donaldson, who asked that questions be, uh, printed beforehand. So everyone has a, uh, kind of a, a similar basis from which to work. And so, uh, the questions were printed and so we will be, uh, working from those. Uh, what I'd like to do is we're going to go in alphabetical order. We're going to ask the questions of the individual folks. We're going to go through all six and then I'll go out for public comment. So, um, on that note, what I'd like to do is, uh, Mr. Burton, you are first. Are you there? There you are.
I'm here. I'm here.
All right. So.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, um, I'm happy to start. So, uh, my first questions, the question is, describe your ideas about how Delray Oaks could meet its arena numbers.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, I'll just say upfront as I answer the questions. Thank you for considering my application. Thank you for considering my application. It sounds like I'm going to have a serious delay. So.
No, no, you're fine. It was somebody else. You should be okay.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks for considering my application. This would be my second term as a, um, planning commissioner. And, um, upfront, I will say that I've learned a lot in the last four years and that would help me be a valuable asset for the community if we decide to go forward with that. So, so let's talk for a second about regional housing needs allocation. Um, as I voiced at a city council meeting, oh, it has to have been at least 18 months ago, maybe two years ago. Um, I challenged the numbers, um, upfront um, that go into the allocations. I, I challenged the way the numbers were derived and some of the growth expectations for Delray Oaks. And, um, I find that, um, there's an unreasonable burden being placed on little Delray Oaks. And, um, in order for the city council to try to move forward to meet the allocations set forth, um, in those documents is almost unreasonable for, for us to do that. So the first thing I would do, and I know this doesn't sound like a proper positive path. I would challenge those, I would dig into those numbers and find out where they're wrong because to me they're wrong. And maybe your planning commission can help you with that. Maybe, maybe we could be kind of a fact finder with that. So that's the first thing I would do is I don't like the numbers. I think they're wrong and I think they're too big for Delray Oaks. Um, so let's say that we, we dig in and the numbers are right, which I do not think that they will be. Um, I find that the options available would include, um, number one, choosing to not develop and not grow over at Fort Ord for a minute. That is an option to me. Um, and expecting housing to be built where we're not developing, that's a, that's certainly an option. We can remain as small as we are. Is that the preferred option? Uh, I don't know. Um, Councilman Donaldson and I had a discussion about this, uh, a week or so ago. And, um, I find that maybe the small townness of Delray Oaks is maybe it, it's potentially a challenge here and I don't really like the challenge, um, for our small townness. Um, so option one, challenge the numbers. Option two, don't develop the parcels over there. Don't try to add any extra housing over there. Think of other creative ways, um, to, to go about meeting whatever these, whatever these potential numbers are. Um, and the third way then again, of course, is probably to develop our new pieces of land over at Fort Ord. That's like alternative number three in my book. Um, maybe it's inevitable that we do that, but I think we can be, uh, fairly careful about how we think through those allocations. That's enough about that.
Okay. Let's go to, um, Ms. Shirley.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Burton. Thank you. Um, I'd like you to describe three big steps that the planning commission should take prior to moving forward with potential new development in Fort Ord.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman Shirley. Let me tell you, first and foremost, um, before we would do any, um, developments on our new land or tearing things down and setting new things up. I believe you've always got to go back to what makes the town. So, um, in thinking about what makes Delray Oaks, it's right there for us. It's right in our mission and our vision for the community. I mean, we want, and I'll just, and you guys may have these memorized. I don't. But I do know that the vision of Delray Oaks is to unify our city with interconnected welcoming and thriving neighborhood parks and a vibrant downtown. I'm not so sure we really have a downtown. Um, maybe some people would say, oh, Safeway, that's our downtown. Or maybe the other end of it over there where the restaurants at, and maybe that's considered to be our downtown. But I think we need to hold true. Step one, make sure that we hold true to our vision for long range. If not, we need to adjust our vision. I thought the council did a great job looking at the strengths of Delray Oaks not too long ago. You guys did a SWOT analysis. I looked that stuff over. I think you had a lot of important things on there. And many of the strengths of our little community are all about the small town feeling for what we have. And I'll tell you, that's what, that's what I fight. Um, and, and it's not a hard fight because everybody, I, almost everybody on the planning commission sees it the same way. So it's not really a fight, but that's what I, when I'm on the planning commission, I always try to maintain that. So that's one. Stick to our vision. Number two, um, as we're thinking about what we might do with that, we need to be careful about what our options are. You heard me mention that a little bit about this allocation piece. Doing nothing is an option. Uh, making it all, um, guarded environmental area, I think potentially is an option. So we need to think carefully through what all of our options are. Not just, we've already caved into, we're going to develop and that's what we're going to do. Don't just jump right to, okay, we're going to develop. How are we going to do it? I don't think that, I don't think we've considered all the alternatives when we do that. Um, finally, um, and yeah, those of you that know me a little more, um, intimately perhaps or, uh, neighborly in some sense, you know that I was in the Navy and I'm a very, um, organized, uh, even military-like thinker. Okay? And my time in the Navy, I got half of that being a helicopter pilot and that's tactical. And I got the other half, both learning and teaching operations research, which is all about decision-making, using data and information to quantitatively make decisions. And I think that's the third thing we need to do. We need to dig into the numbers because you'll have alternatives. And as you, as you investigate those alternatives, we gotta be very deliberate about how we dig into those details. So those are my three things. Make sure you stay connected to the vision. Do not, under any circumstance, forget that there are other alternatives out there and be very quantitative when we investigate our alternatives. That's it.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gag, or I'm sorry, Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Doug, my question is about the five-step process for selecting a developer. Uh, I was wondering if you could give your opinions on that.
I'd be happy to offer some opinions on that. Um, and my first opinion has already been shared. To me, the five-step process already assumes that we're going to develop. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm not quite online with that. So make sure that we're considering all the alternatives upfront before we even start doing the first step in how do we pick a developer? Beyond that, I treat developers, um, or, or decisions like whether to develop or not to develop, I treat them with the same model I do that I investigate problems for the Department of Defense. And it's pretty straightforward. And I think the five steps are, um, they'll, um, the steps as we have them, um, organized should fit something like this. Make sure you know what your goals are upfront. And to me, a goal is a yes, no. Do you achieve it or not? Then the next thing is to lay out all of your objectives. There's not just one objective with development. There's going to be multiple. Some will want to be small, like maybe minimize, um, the amount of green space that would go away. I, I, I'm not sure. Um, um, as we listen to developers describe their plans, maybe we, we, we should pay attention to those objectives that we have as a town. The next piece in there gets back to, and you hear me keep, these themes keep coming up because it's a thinking process. What are the alternatives? Those would be the developers. That of course is in the five-step process. Just make sure we have all of the options. And then I'm an OR guy. I'm a numbers guy. So modeling matters to me. And there's going to be uncertainty involved with, no matter what the alternative is, there will be uncertainty. Not the least of which is, we just heard about water. And we just heard about the economy and things going up sometimes, down sometimes. There's uncertainty everywhere. By definition, risk management must be kind of attached to our entire process for picking a developer. And that includes understanding what the uncertainties are. Okay? And at the same time, knowing what those, and usually by risk, we mean bad things that can happen. It doesn't have to be that way. It can be opportunities that Delray Oaks misses. But we also need to pay, when we're doing our modeling, use some of the techniques that are used every day in risk management, standard, uh, management techniques. And the final piece is about preferences. This, that's a standard model that I use to pick problems apart and that's, preferences is all about stakeholders. And making sure that the community voice is weaved all the way through all of the thinking that, that's what we elected you guys to do. That's what we choose planning commissioners to do. Make sure you represent the community. Um, and, uh, we already know about the vision as I described before, that has to be connected in some way. So as long as the process has got that, I like it. Five steps, 10 steps, doesn't matter to me as long as we get the key points in there.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Gagliotti or Ms. Lintell? There were no questions submitted, but do you have one?
No, no, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I, I have a question. If, if we didn't develop the Fort Ord properties, how, how can we pay the bills and get rid of that large debt that we've have and, um, yeah, okay. Do you have any ideas what we could do to, uh?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Yes. Thank you for asking that question. That's, uh, that's the key question to me for city council. And your planning commissioners, we're there to help you with that. That's what I think. Offer our opinions and investigate. We're here, we're there just to help you guys get to good decisions for our little town. So if we're not going to develop it, we've got to find a way to make revenues somehow line up with, I, I use the word benefits. You can also use the word services. Okay? And there's, there are ways to balance the books that do not involve, uh, more tax streams or something like that. And it's simply in the other side of the equation. We cut services and we cut down to a point, you can do this. We could do this. I'm not saying we want to do it exactly. I think there's something in the middle that we can do between, you know, putting five-star hotel-like development over there and, and using up every square inch. That's one extreme and the other extreme is no development at all. And I think if you go no development, I have seen some of the budget projections. And I've, and I've heard, um, um, Councilman Donaldson and I talked a little bit about this. Things just cost more over time. So in general, it's nice to have a way to generate more revenues. I think the other side of that is be careful about your services too. Make sure that we need everything. We've got some very nice services in this community. I, for one, think that we are the most safe and secure little town, any town, any size on this peninsula, anywhere close. And that, you can hand that right to our current acting city manager, our chief of police and those dedicated police officers that we have. That's one service that we pay for, that maybe we decide to develop to maintain that service, that benefit. But if it's not, if we say, if we go with, let's not do any development, let's go on the other side, we might have to trim our police force down. We might have to, um, choose not to do some of the other things we do. I kind of like the services the way they are. So we're probably going to have to do some development. Um, Councilwoman, uh, Lintell, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah. And I also, uh, you mentioned about the keeping the community small and which I love myself. Um, the city has become very divided in the last couple of years. And what would you think of like in the development process that we have a more of a downtown area like other cities have? We're lacking that. And I think that that would help us maintain the, the small community atmosphere. I think it would bring residents of the city closer together and people will congregate and get to know. What, what are your feelings about having a downtown center as part of that development?
I like it. Me personally, it sounds great, but I'd want to dig the details out. I'd want to have proposals about that. When I talk about alternatives, maybe that's one of those middle ground pieces in there to where we could have this downtown area. Maybe that's a good, good positive idea. I would love to see plans about that. It doesn't mean that in the end, as one of your planning commissioners, I would say, yes, let's do it. Um, but I would certainly, uh, look. Um, but I would certainly, uh, look that open as a, as a viable alternative, yes.
Thank you, Doug. Um, we need to move on to the next candidate. So thank you for those answers, Mr. Hayworth. Great, um, I'll start. Can you please describe three Delray Oaks business regulations that should be updated immediately? And what three would you add and why?
Business regulations, well, um,
Or no, planning. Sorry, building, planning, sorry.
You know, I, I don't, I don't know that there's any, any that I think we need to, uh, change at this point. I think we, it's, it's, this is a work in process at this point, as we know, the general plan and, um, all of that. Um, you can tell I'm nervous. This is not a, a good setting for me. So, I mean, these are, these are things we've talked about in meetings all the time. And we have the general plan amendment working on, we're talking about the, um, the ADU stuff and, and all of that. So, um, I think we just have to take a slow process and look at this.
Okay, Ms. Shirley.
Hi, Mr. Hayworth. I'm just going to ask you the same question that I asked Mr. Burton. So, uh, three steps that the planning commission should take prior to moving forward with any development at Fort Door.
Well, you know, given the choice, I don't think any of us want to develop Fort Door. Uh, but you know, given the situation we're in, I think it's a resource that the city needs to, um, use what it can bring. And, and I think that we need to, um, communicate this to the prospective developers and make sure that they know what our vision is. And, you know, they can probably help us with the regional housing, uh, needs numbers.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, and Mike, same question for me, the five-step process.
Well, you know, it, you know, I've, I've looked at that and, um, it's, it seems like it's the standard, um, that's used for development. And it, it just seems like it's based on, um, common sense. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm really about common sense. I'm really about staying to the point of what we're about and what we're talking about. And, uh, I, I think we, I think we support it.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Lintell?
Yes, I'll ask the same question. What do you think about having a downtown area? If we develop the four-door properties?
I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. Uh, it, it just really kind of depends on what that development ends up looking like. If we tell the developer we want a downtown, uh, sort of, uh, situation, then I think that's what we do. I, I would welcome that. Um, it would be nice to, you know, have a, a, a city hall. It may be a little more modern and a little bigger to fit the growing needs because God knows they're going to need, uh, um, more staff and, uh, resources. So yeah, no, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, and thank you for your service, for your service. We appreciate that.
You're welcome, yeah.
Uh, you went so quickly. Kim, did you have another question?
Um, sure, yeah, uh, Mr. Hayworth.
I was going to come.
Oh, oh, okay.
John, did you have a question?
I did.
Oh, well, please.
Um, I just didn't have anything for Mr. Burton. Uh, but Mike, uh, first of all, I, I want to thank you for all the time that, um, you know, that, that you've put you, all the time you've invested in your life, uh, to the planning commission. And you were my mentor. I mean, you maybe didn't know that, but I sat next to you for three years and, uh, and, and learned a lot about being a, a planning commissioner from you. So for that, I thank you. What I really want to know is why have you done that? Like what is it? Why have you been a planning commissioner for so long? What, what motivated you to be a planning commissioner? What's kept you on the board?
Well, you know, a, a lot of you know that, uh, we originally moved to Delray Oaks probably in 1964. My dad was in the Navy. Um, and the, the house that I live in now, they bought in 68. Um, I bought it from them about 22 years ago, my wife and I. You know, I got my Eagle Scout badge in the, um, city council chamber, um, by, um, our mayor at the time, you know? So I have a long history in the city. And, you know, I used to play in the frog pond. George will tell you the stories about growing up here and living and, and working or playing in the frog pond. I, you know, I just, I don't want to make, I don't have the time to commit to what you folks do with the city council, which I appreciate. And, um, I think that commitment is, is to be commended. So this is, you know, this is the best way I can, uh, give to the city, I think.
Thank you, thank you very much. I think we, it looked like we lost you. Thank you.
All right, so, um, actually, Ms. Shirley, if you don't mind, we need to move forward. It's already 8:30. So, um, all right, thank you, Mr. Hayworth. Uh, Mr. Jack Shaw? You're muted? You're still muted?
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay, well, uh, my audio is up, uh, but my, uh, excuse me, my video is up, but my audio is out and I'm on the phone, so I don't know how to.
You're fine.
We can hear you.
You're fine, we can hear you fine. Just stay right there, stay right there.
Okay, no.
Um, so my question for you is how do you keep up to date on evolving relevant legislation and planning guidelines that affect our city? What resources do you tap into?
Sources do you tap into?
Well, the big one is the, uh, the Planning Commission Academy that we, that's a three-day event and it's quite comprehensive. And that's what I fall back on and, uh, uh, council lawyer.
Council lawyer.
Okay, so I didn't hear all that. Did everybody else?
Okay. So I didn't hear all that. Did everybody else?
Maybe we can cut, maybe we can cut the video and just hear the audio.
There you go.
Maybe we can cut, maybe we can cut the video and just hear the audio.
There you go.
I can stop.
Well, I'm not quite sure I know how to do that.
Perfect, that's good, George.
I just, I just turned your video off. So could you answer that one more time, please? We lost you halfway through.
I, uh, I depend on the, uh, the Planning Commission Academy. And, uh, that, the staff and the city attorney. I weigh a lot on, uh, our city staff.
Weigh a lot on, uh, our city staff.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Shirley.
Mr. Jack Shaw, it might help if you turn off one of your devices.
Might help if you turn off one of your devices. Might help if you turn off one of your devices.
Can, can you hear me? Now you're muted.
I actually think his computer, George, your computer works. I think you had to shut your phone off.
My, my, uh, okay. I'm out of here. Now I can't hear you.
Yeah, can you, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can't hear you.
You, you, you can't, you, you just answered me. Can you hear me?
That my computer is cutting in and out.
Maybe you can call in back or.
Yeah.
And so that's why I just turned my phone off.
So George, what I might suggest is you, um, disconnect and call back in. We're going to go to the next person and then we'll get you on the, at the end. Okay?
George, can you hear us?
Okay, we're going to move on to Mr. Krieger. And, um, if, uh, Jim is on the phone, so I'm hoping he's calling George. And, uh, let's move on to, uh, Mr. Krieger. All right, so what I'd like to start with, um, is the same question, actually. How do you keep up to date on evolving relevant legislation and planning guidelines that affect our city? And what resources do you tap into?
Well, uh, first I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to, uh, come and talk with you tonight. Uh, like Commissioner Burton, I just am wrapping up my first, uh, term. And I've enjoyed serving and I would like the opportunity to keep serving and maybe give the city a little return on their investment. It takes a little while to get your feet under you and figure out what's going on. And I feel like it's, uh, that's, it's been a very, um, informative four years. And I look forward to, uh, what's coming down the road. Um, the League of California Cities is a great resource. Uh, I hit that co- pretty constantly. The, uh, the state, like just, the state, like just nature has a really easy to use website. Also, uh, you can look up current housing laws. It's pretty easy to search, uh, by topic and get a very up-to-date current, you know, what committee it's in, what vote it's going through, what's going on. So you can actually follow right with the laws. And I've, I've done some, spent some time there. It's, it's pretty informative. Most of the, uh, bills are fairly easy to read, especially the, the first part, the, the summaries. And so a lot, sometimes just going straight to the source is, is a good thing to do. Uh, I subscribe to several different, uh, news lists. You know, basically, there are people, uh, organizations that, well, you can sign up and they send you, uh, you know, they're the ones that are doing all the work, going out across the state, finding, uh, articles that, uh, deal with housing in this case. Uh, and those are, I find those very useful because they, I don't have to spend time hunting for them. They, they dig them all up and they see the links and you can go right to them. And that's, uh, a very, very efficient way to find out and keep up with what's going on. So, and as, uh, George was saying, the, uh, you know, Alex, the staff, those are all resources. They're there all the time as well.
Thank you, Ms. Shirley.
All right, Mr. Krieger. Um, what are those steps that you would recommend before we move forward for building in Fort Door?
Well, I say, I see three areas where the, uh, planning commission and, and they move sort of simultaneously. One is we need to up our training game. Uh, as we were just talking, I've spent some time looking at it. There is just a whirlwind of, um, laws changing right now. As we all know, you just read the newspaper, you know that. You don't even have to be that involved in it. Uh, changes are coming constantly. So I think, uh, some sort of training for us as planning commissioners so that we're making informed decisions, uh, is, is one, one step. Upsetting the general plans, the other. Obviously, we're working with a 25-year-old plan and it talks about golf courses and it talks about, you know, class E and F roads when they use VMT now, uh, you know, vehicle mile travel. I mean, there's all these things in the general plan and that's supposed to be what's guiding us. Really need to get that up to speed so that we, uh, that, that expresses the vision of the, uh, the city. So I think that needs to be happening. And I think, you know, as a planning commission, and I think, uh, Commissioner Burton also alluded to this, I think we're uniquely situated to help take the lead on engaging the student. Excuse me, it's my teacher coming out. School year's almost over. Um, engaging the residents and getting feedback. And I think that that's something that the, uh, I know, um, Chairman Hock has talked about that in the past, you know, getting, using the planning commission to, to get that resident input and, and however that, you know, if it's workshops or if we do it during the regular meetings, however, you know, we do that. There are several ways we could, we can make that happen. But I think, I think those are three things that definitely need to kind of fall into place as we go forward.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, Gary, if you want to provide any feedback on the five-step process.
Yeah, I, I, I think the steps are fine. I mean, I, I, as, uh, as Mike was saying, I mean, it's, it's pretty standard stuff. I, my comment would be, uh, what I would have, what I would have, um, what I would maybe want to put some more consideration on is the timeline, the timing of it. I, the first two steps are great. We got to know the legal landscape before we move forward. We need to engage the public. I think the 45 days is a bit aggressive. I think we need to, um, you know, there's things that need to, uh, happen in general plan. I think we need to talk to more residents to update the vision. Uh, you know, like I said, our general plan's full of golf courses and stuff. It's zoned incorrectly and there's all sorts of stuff that's going to happen. I just think that the, um, the timeline for me would be, uh, a little rushed. I think the steps are fine. I just think we need to maybe put a little more time after that second step before we, uh, are, are going into the three, four and five with the, the developer, that's all.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Lintell?
I have no additional questions, uh, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gagliotti?
Yeah, I don't know, no, I'm, I'm very familiar with Gary. I chat with him, you know, pretty, I would say regularly. So, no, I, I know, uh, he's very deliberate and, uh, and he, he does his homework, so.
Okay, so thank you, uh, Mr. Krieger. We're going to move on to Ms. Lauderdale.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us this evening and applying. Uh, so my question for you is please describe your ideas about how Delray Oaks could meet its RENA numbers.
So I think it depends on how you move forward in the future in your development. But I was part of the Monterey Bay, um, meeting where lots of leaders came together to look at how the housing market, um, was really not serving under, um, privileged people and how we do need to do something to make it more affordable for people to live. If you look at a lot of people, their living conditions are not, um, they don't have running water. They don't have a lot of things that maybe some of us take for granted. And some of those things that they've even done in Seaside, uh, re- recently is when they did develop their downtown, they put apartment complexes on top of some of those buildings. And with that, it gave people who are paid lower wages the ability to get to work in that downtown area. So it helped with transportation needs to decrease, um, having to transport so they could bike to work, they could walk to work. And it also decreased the amount of cost of living because they were sharing that rental space and costs with the building and the, um, business underneath.
So is there anything in particular that you might suggest for Delray Oaks to be able to?
Well, I think that, I think that depends on the building plans that you have. And obviously, there's lots of preview into that with the city council and things that I haven't got to read thoroughly. And so for me personally, I think diving into that with you guys, if I became part of this commission, um, team and looking at all of those collectively with the fact of including your, um, neighbors and all of the people and all of the residents to say, what do we see the future of Derry Oaks being? I really think that understanding what the future is, not building for today and what our wants are for today, but what our wants are for the future.
Thank you. Ms. Shirley?
Thank you, Ms. Lauderdale. Um, could you tell me what you think the steps should be that the planning commission would take prior to doing any development out of Fort Door?
Yeah, so, um, just so you know, my background is in OR. Um, I manage several ORs. And I think with any process, which we do process improvement all the time in OR to keep everyone safe, um, you really need to start at the base of it and understand the big project. And so with that moving forward, I think taking a step and understanding what step one is with the objectives, like Mr. Burton said, and then looking at how do you get there with a budget, right? Because obviously every step costs a little, somewhat of money and you have a big budget to meet. So you have to keep in mind what your goals are going to be at the end and what that objective is for all of Derry Oaks. And again, what is that future? So I would step at the first step at the base and create a plot line of what are we going to do and what timeline is that going to be? What are our goals? What timeline do we want to meet them in? And what's our objective for the budget? And really hone in on making sure that we're all meeting and saying, okay, this is your objective. And what we do is we create, we create a log that says, okay, and these are what everyone's responsible for. And I think keeping that on track will help with that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, you're muted, but I think I'm next. Um, Alexis, uh, I'd just like to hear your thoughts on the five-step process.
Yeah, so I was looking at the five-step process before we started and it's really in line with what I was just saying is looking at the foundation. So evaluating the economic feasibility of what we want to do. And again, that starts with your objectives. What are our objectives? If we don't have the same objectives, we're not going to be able to create that five-step process to start with. So we all have to be in line with what our goals are. Um, determining what that cost is going to be and the fiscal responsibility of how much benefit that's going to be to our little town, which I really do love our little town. But I do think sometimes we have to do something to keep Derry Oaks sustainable. And then finding out what, where exactly we can do that. What elements do we have to meet? Because we might have this master plan, but then we find out that part of that land is not usable because there's something. but then we find out that part of that land is not usable because there's something, um, there's some type of animal there. And so I really think the five steps lays out how we do that successfully. So I think it's a good tool for us to use. Obviously, um, keep in mind that there are other tools, I think, that could be bundled with that to make sure that we meet all the objectives and goals.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Lintel, did you have your hand up?
Yes, um, I would just like to uh know how you uh feel about development of the Fort Ord properties, please.
Yeah, I think that, um, I think that it's a touchy subject. I think that we all love the small town feel of Derry Oaks, but I also do think that we have to be innovative and understand how we can keep that small town feel, but also make sure that we are giving resources needed to our city um support, right? I know that I talked to Randy who's downtown right now quite often and the manager, and I know that they're struggling with support and that there's things that aren't done because we don't have the support to get them done. And so I do think that developing that area will allow us to give more support, to be more successful in the future and to make sure that we're doing everything right to keep Derry Oaks out of trouble of other things that um might come from not having the resources and maybe the process not being done the correct way every time. And so I really think that checks and balances are important and the development can give us funds to do that, but making sure we don't overdevelop so we don't lose that small town feel.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
John?
Yeah, uh, similar to the question I've had with uh, with Mike is um, Alexis, why, why are you running? Like what, what's, uh, what's driving you?
Yeah.
Um, to run for planning commission because it is a commitment. It's a four year commitment. It takes a lot of time, it's a lot of reading.
Yeah. So um, I don't mind the work. I actually, um, I know some of the commissioners have had several conversations with me and they see that I don't mind digging in, doing the work and, um, but for me personally, it's about pride and ownership in our community and making sure that we do everything fair and treat everyone equal and making sure that we understand that we do all have feelings and this is our community, but also making sure we look at facts and making sure that everyone has the facts in every situation. And so for me, I will say, um, I did have a rocky experience, um, trying to get my addition put through. And that really inspired me to not make sure um that no one else had that rocky experience. And being a guide to have um an objective voice to make a difference. And so really this comes out of passion and I am all about helping people. I'm in an area of service. And so I'm a nurse and I'm a director and the reason I went into leadership um was not because I wanted to be a leader, because I wanted to be a boss, but I wanted to be able to make a difference in policies and regulations to touch everybody's life, every patient who walks through my department. And I kind of feel the same way here. I want to be a planning commissioner so I can touch people's lives and make it better for everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for? All right. Thank you, Alexis.
You're welcome.
Let's move on to Mr. Ragsdale Cronin.
Ms. Mayor, I am also online now.
Okay. So um, would, would you mind waiting until after uh, Mr. Ragsdale Cronin?
No problem at all.
Okay, thank you. Um, so uh, Bill, could you please describe three current building regulations that should be updated immediately and what three would you add and why?
Well, I kind of think, thank you for having me on. Thank you for allowing me to apply. And most council members should have, I did read the um the agenda packet and I did reply in writing to uh, most, if not all, of the questions that were posed in the city council meeting. I'm hoping to try to shorten up the meetings because I know time limits have been an issue of late. Uh, the three things I would look at, nonconforming uses. There was um, in, in in reference to Alexis, she ran into a nonconforming use and then there was some gray areas. So I think um, there needs to be clarity on how we're going to deal with this and it shouldn't be, well, maybe kind of sorta, it needs to be hard and factual. Either is we go with what was the setback when it, at the time or whatever the issue is with the nonconforming use and that's it. Move forward. Make a determination through Alex and get it set and move forward. So we don't have to deal with all that. Um, secondly, um, if you do have a nonconforming use and we decide it's okay to do it, why do you have to go through the use permit process? That just seems to be another hoop for a homeowner to jump through and you're more bureaucratic red tape. Um, if, if it's a conforming use or nonconforming use and we have a policy on it, we just move forward. And then um, last, I think the planning commission should research and adopt a set of architectural review guidelines. Um, Pacific Grove has a very nice set. I happened to look them up the other day just out of curiosity. Uh, when I saw this, you know, saw some questions on it. And architecture review can be very um objective and very selective. And I think you have to be a little more than it's just too big. It's not the right, it's, you know, I mean, I have a bright blue house next to my house. Do I like that color? No. But we don't have a rule that says you can't paint your house bright blue. You know, somebody might not like my greenhouse, you know? So I think you have to have objective standards that you can apply equally, the same as Alexis said, that you can apply equally to every single process. And then when you do have to make a determination, then yeah, you make a determination, but you do it with some guidelines and some resources available to you. Those are my three ideas.
Thank you. Ms. Shirley.
Hello, Mr. Ragsdale Cronin. Could you tell me what three steps you think the planning commission should make prior to developing out anything in Fort Ord?
Yeah, um, I think we need to research and spend some time looking at the latest trends in proposed development in like sized cities, looking to affordability, sustainability, user friendliness. Um, I see that there's kind of a trend now that some folks, the younger generations, aren't buying homes. They're renting, they're leasing. So slapping up a bunch of cookie cutter homes out there may not be what's the best interest for the city. Be willing to think outside the box. The last meeting, somebody mentioned a partnership with uh education and public safety to create housing that, you know, there, there wasn't a lot of detail to it, but that the city may retain ownership and be able to lease or rent to these folks so they can live and work in the city that, or they can live in the city that they work in. And then the last thing I think is we should look at ways to retain ownership of some of that property out there because once you move it out into a development, the city loses everything except the tax base on it. Um, and you know, maybe 20 years from now, if we kept part of that property back and undeveloped 10, 15, 20 years, now trends would change. And a new city council and a new planning commission could come in and come and find a higher best use, a higher better use for some of that property. So I think in, in a nutshell, don't jump in to build a bunch of cookie cutter houses. Um, I think you got to look at trends and see what's emerging. And there are a lot of little towns like us in, in California and around that are probably faced with the same problems. And so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We just need to go out and do a little, you know, scratching around and digging. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Scott?
Yeah, Bill, I saw your response to my question and I think all the other council members received it as well. But if there's anything that you would like to add to that, that'd be great to hear.
Uh, I totally apologize for the lousy typing. Um, my spell check obviously was turned off. Um, I'm using a little better than that. No, pretty much it. I mean, I think the steps are there and I think they're, they're adequate, but I think that there needs to be a little more due deliberation as you go through.
Ms. Lintel?
Yes, uh, Bill, what do you think about having a downtown area in the uh, if, if we develop the Fort Ord property?
Um, I'm very much in favor of a downtown area. I'm not sure that Fort Ord would be, the Fort Ord parcels would be the best place for it. And we got a kind of a, our town is trisected, I guess, if that's a word, by 218 and General Jim Moore. So you got to kind of figure out how you're going to get to it. You don't want to make it just a drive to destination. You want to make it, to me, you'd want to make it where people could walk, ride bicycles. One thought is when Fort Tag goes through, maybe you move the commercial area there um between the Moose Lodge and Stone Creek up into the Fort Ord area. So it's a little, you know, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind, so to speak, but it's still a business district. And then build a downtown in that area because you would have the, either overpass or tunnel, whichever Fort Tag settles on to get one side of 218 to the other. And you would also be able to get across General Jim Moore in that same area. So I'm definitely a support of a downtown. I think it would be wonderful, especially if it could be um bicycle um and pedestrian friendly.
Thank you.
Sean?
Yeah, my question is just a little variant of the same one I've been asking given, but, you know, but Bill, why, why is it taking you so long to throw your hat in the ring?
Um, honestly, I was buried, you know, I mean, I just retired from uh M1W about four years ago. So I was buried in a career kids. Um, my youngest daughter is now in high school. My oldest has graduated college. My middle is in college. I'm finding myself having more time. Um, I haven't been a resident here for just about 12 years. I got more time to devote to the city and, you know, want to get my toe in the, into city politics. I think I can bring some, I think I can bring some perspective and some uh of my uh experience to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Great. So um, I want to do, before we go to George, I'm not forgetting you, George. Um, I want to do a time check. It's nine o'clock.
Yeah.
So um, uh, we can, of course, we need to talk to George and vote on this. And then we will vote to see if we want to extend to do the last item. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Wait, Mayor Kerr, is the last item, the swearing in or the one beyond that?
The one beyond that.
Okay.
City managers report. Yeah, I think that's the last one, right? City managers report. Everything else is, everything else turned in.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So let's keep going with George. Mr. Jack Shaw, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. And I apologize. I was listening to uh the meeting on my computer and on the phone at the same time. So it was all screwed up.
That gives the echo. That's okay. All right. So my question for you is, um, I'm going to give you a hard one because you've been around so long. Um, describe, describe three critical additions or deletions needed to our current uh general plan.
Well, um, I don't have a whole bunch, but um, I think that um we should take a look at it and it's awful long. You know, it's um 93 pages to the general plan. But uh, we should, I, I've got notes written down here that uh, hmm, and I'm uh, I wish you'd have given me the other one, but uh.
Well, I can give you that one too.
Yeah. The uh, the general plan I think is, is good. We need to uh just stay with it, you know, it uh, it's, it's, it's a good plan. And uh, we just need to uh go along with it. And uh, I don't, can't find my notes. I apologize for that.
It's okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Shirley.
All right, Mr. Jack Shaw. So um, what three things do you think the planning commission do, should do before we move into development at Fort Ord?
Well, I think the uh, the general plan follows along with that, that um, the one, one big thing that I think we should follow or, or go back on is um, we need to get a sustainable financial um thing going. And I think um, a hotel would be out there in occupancy tax. That's one of the biggest things that uh, I think we should go on. I'm, like one of the other applicants said, that uh, we should not develop all of it. We should keep some of it for uh, you know, possible future development or um, you know, just keep it as open space.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, George, um, if you would like to provide any comments on my question.
No, I support it 100%. It's a logical way to approach that development.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Lintel.
Harsh, what, how do you feel about having a downtown section uh developed somewhere uh within our Delray Oaks?
Well, I'm, I have a strong opinion on that. I'm glad you kept that with me. Um, I think that uh, it would be a nice idea to move all of the uh industrial um park down there, uh, the Jerry Grahams and um, the storage units and move that to the Fort Ord development. And um, develop that as our um downtown and connect it up with Stone Creek. I think that uh, we could have some nice uh restaurants and so forth and, and walking back and forth, it would uh be a great little downtown.
Thank you.
All right, John, any questions?
Yeah, just, just the same one. I've been kind of asking, George, why do you keep running? Why do you keep doing this? What's your, what's your motivation to continuing, keep? I mean, you, I, I think now you are the longest standing planning commissioner the city has had.
In the county.
In the county. So what, why? I mean, what, I mean, what, what, it's not, it's not, I mean, it's often thankless, you know? So tell me something, tell me something I don't know.
You know, it's, it's not thankless. I've lived here the majority of my life. We moved here in 1955. Uh, I learned how to ride a bicycle on these streets. And I've always wanted to be involved with the city. I promote it every chance I get it, get. And uh, it's a great little city. A lot of people want to move here when I mention that I live here and they go, oh, that's the greatest little city. And um, I just want to be involved in uh, in its future and how we go forward.
Thank you.
All right. So that ends uh the section of our questions. I would like to go out to the public if anyone has any um comments. All right, Ms. Sol Sing.
Thank you, Mary Sol. A number of, but I'm going to much bring and to, uh, first of the reappointment of Vice Chair Hayworth and Commissioners Jack Shaw and Krieger. I also support the appointment of Bill Cronin Ragsdale. I have been in attentive attendance at the last three council meetings. And I object to the re- reappointment of Commissioner Burton. Let me share just one quote from Mr. Burton. This appears at our one minute six at the April 14th video, which is available on the city's website in case you want to check the accuracy of this. Mr. Burton says, quote, "My personal belief is the planning commission's duty to the community is to find a way to say yes. That's what the planning commission should do," unquote. Now, I always thought that the planning commission, do, commission's duty was to ensure that a project, the project itself was in compliance with the municipal code building requirements and with the city's published guidelines for building. But over the last three months of listening to Mr. Burton, I think he's on a very different track than that. And I think he should not be serving as a planning commissioner. I think it's a detriment to the city and I believe it's a detriment to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Um, I see Dennis Ali on.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. Uh, so I just uh, you, you've got a tough decision to make. You've got a lot of qualified uh people that are applying. And um, there are some things that I would hope that you keep in mind as you go through this uh process. Um, I agree with uh what, something that Mary just said about you need to have an open mind. Planning commissioners need to have an open mind. I saw, I experienced as a planning commissioner, somebody who was our chairman, who I thought didn't have much of an open mind. Uh, so you've got to be open minded. You have to be fair. You have to have critical analysis skills. You have to be willing to make a significant commitment of time. And you have to have a willingness to investigate laws and regulations and keep in mind what's best for the citizens of our city. Also, you have to be able to do good cost benefit analysis. How much is it going to cost? Also, you have to be able to do good cost benefit analysis. How much is it going to cost? And what are, what are the benefits that a development or a redesign of a house? Well, how is that going to benefit the city? Extremely important is the walkability of Delray Oaks. And I've been an advocate for that for a long time. You know, we have to find ways to make Delray Oaks a more walkable city. I'd like to see in the future some development of sidewalks on most, much of our city. The concept of a downtown, I've been a strong proponent of that all along, and I applaud everybody's comments about the downtown. I don't know whether that belongs out in the former Ford Door property. Or as George suggested, down towards the development. I often joke about a a beer garden down there, but I think it could be a very attractive thing. And finally, it's extremely important that we have some historical perspective to look at. And that's why people like Mike Hayworth and George Jack Shaw have all this history. They grew up in this city. They saw how it has grown and changed. And if you don't have that perspective, I think you lose a very important aspect of the planning commission. You've got to have some appreciation for how did we get to where we are? Not only where do we need to go? But how did we get to where we are? And what are the important elements of that historical Delray Oaks that we need to carry forward? So please take some of my comments into purse, into consideration as you do your deliberation and voting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I thought I saw a hand raised. Mr. Shu. You're muted.
Okay, just unmuted. Okay, I totally agree with Mary.
Could you tell us who you are and where you live, please?
Dennis Shu, I live on Bray Place in Delray Oaks. I've lived here for 41 years. And I totally agree with Mary, what she said about Mr. Burton. And I want to read something off the planning commission website. Says, "Planning commission members are responsible for keeping the look and feel of Delray Oaks consistent with the standards set forth by the founders." After listening to Mr. Burton for the last three meetings, all he wants to do is say yes to everything. And you can go back to the meetings and just hear him say it. And it's my understanding commissioner is supposed to evaluate each project and vote on it that way, not just say yes to everything. If he's going to say yes to everything, I don't even know why we have a planning. We shouldn't even have one. Just let everybody do whatever they want to do. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clark?
There it is. Okay, got it. Hi, wow, that was, that was enlightening. First of all, I think to maintain the integrity and flow of the planning commission, I definitely would let you know that I'd be in favor of Jack Shaw and Hayworth continuing on. Then we come to somewhat new blood and Alexis Lauderdale knocked it out of the park. Some of the things she said, in case you happen to miss it, she actually used the word team that she wants to participate as a team. She also talked about very common things that I was just stunned to hear somebody actually come out and say that of a budget, working against goals, working against the timeline, a start and a finish to a project. And holding and being responsible. All those things hit it out of the park for me. I think she definitely is the number three option there for tonight. And when it comes to number four, for me, it's a toss up a little bit between Burton and Bill Ragsdale Cronin. I, I do know that I have some heartfelt leaning towards Mr. Cronin because he talked about the thing my wife has pushed for so many years when she was on the city council, which is a downtown Delray Oaks in that area where Jared Graham and the storage units are. But the, the important thing for that, for that fourth slot, however you guys do it, is keep in mind, whoever it is, they've got to work together as a team. Look for somebody that's positive. Look for somebody that's objective and look for somebody that's team conscious and not you know, their own thinking and way of that things need to be done. I stuttered a little bit, but I think you got the idea. Good luck, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I'm not seeing any.
I'm not seeing any either. So what I'll do is we'll come back to the council. Any last minute questions, comments? Seeing none. What I'd like to do is just go right down the line. And if you could just let us know the four you would like. Karen, can you? Keep track?
I'll keep track.
So I'd like to start with Ms. Shirley.
I'm going to say Krieger, Hayworth, Ragsdale Cronin and Burton. Okay, give me just a minute. Sorry. Sorry. Hayworth. Okay. Ragsdale Cronin. Yes. And Burton. Okay, thank you.
Scott?
Yeah, I'll just say that I've never seen a planning commission selection this lively. So a lot of, lot of great discussion. And I'll tell you, experience is very important to me and having that experience, knowledge and history of the town is critical. All six candidates highly qualified, very, very capable. I think that experience piece with that, I, I will support George Jack Shaw, Gary Krieger and Mike Hayworth. And allowing someone new to come in, I think is important as well. And that would be Bill Ragsdale Cronin.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gagliotti?
Well, definitely Mike Hayworth, George Jack Shaw. And, and, and I'm looking for, for, for the someone new, I think, actually, I think I'm going to, I'm going to with Lauderdale, Alexis Lauderdale. And so now it's, it's, and Mike. Man, this is tough. I'm going to go with Bill Ragsdale Cronin.
Thank you. Karen, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Ms. Lintel.
Yes. Mr. Jack Shaw. Mr. Hayworth. And I, I like Ms. Lauderdale. And I, I think I'll go with Mr. Ragsdale Cronin.
Wonderful. All right. And my four are Hayworth, Ragsdale Cronin, Krieger. And this is hard.
Not easy.
Yeah. New, experienced. I'm going to go with Jack Shaw. So Karen, could you let us know where we're at?
Give me just a minute, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hayworth. Krieger. Ragsdale Cronin, and I think Jack Shaw. Oh, could be a tie. No.
You're not muted, Allison.
I know. Thank you.
Okay.
Am I clicking or making?
Two to two with Krieger and Alexis. George Hayworth and BRC.
Drumroll, please.
I know. I'm sorry, guys.
That's okay.
I just want to make sure I'm getting this right.
I think it, it sounds like it's definitely Hayworth.
Yes.
Dale Cronin.
Yes.
And then I get, then it gets blurry for me.
George?
Jack Shaw. Jack Shaw had three.
We only have four. Four.
Okay.
Four.
Okay. And then who's the last?
Bill.
No. We already have him.
Oh, okay.
I believe Ms. Lauderdale and Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Two and two.
Thank you, Jim.
Actually, I have three for Gary and two for Alexis.
Okay, so what, what I'm hearing is Hayworth, Bill Ragsdale Cronin, George Jack Shaw and Gary Krieger.
Yes.
I want to thank everyone for applying. This was yeah, for those of you that are rotating off, those of you that are rotating on. This is a, a big commitment and we're grateful that you raised your hand and you'll be doing some really important work for the city over the next couple of years. So on that note, let me, Karen, can I swear them all in at once?
You can.
Okay. So if the four of you could raise your right hand, we're going to do one, two, three. Who am I missing? George?
Assume George has his hand raised.
George, can you hear us? I'm going to assume yes. All right. So I state your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemy, enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I, that I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or reservation.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. All right, we look forward to the next planning commission.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for hanging in there. All right.
For all my problems.
All right, congratulations. So the last new business is to consider committee appointment to the Monterey County Veterans Issues Advisory Committee. Mr. City Manager, Action City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and everyone else who's still standing. This is a action item, reference the appointment of a city representative to a Monterey County, an official Monterey County advisory committee. It's the Veterans Issues Advisory Committee. They have requested the city of Delray Oaks, as well as all other jurisdictions within the county to participate in this committee. We have in the past, and I believe the last serving member that we had was our former mayor, Jerry Edlin, based on the information that was given to me by the county. They they are requesting that a representative on this committee should have some knowledge of projects and programs within the represented area that affects or will affect the veteran, veteran population of the county. It does not have to be an elected official. It does not have to be an appointed official with the city. It can be a resident. And the staff is asking direction of one or two options. If there is not a city official that will be appointed tonight, the other option that we can do is we can, staff can advertise this throughout the next month, and we can address the issue at next month's meeting, at which point the mayor can make a nomination for that position and council can then vote on it at next month's meeting. And staff would recommend that one of those two options be considered.
So the ordinance states that I, we can discuss this evening whether, A, we want a, an, an appointed person or we want to go out to the public or all of those. But I do make the suggestion for the vote. So this evening, we can talk about how broad we want the the expanse, and then we'll come back in June and I will offer a suggestion. So on that, Ms. Lintel, your hand is raised.
Yes. Are, are you asking for names right now, Allison?
No, we're, so the, it's, the opportunity can be, can include a resident. So some of our appointments are for residents, some of them are for electeds only. This one, we have the option for both. And so the conversation tonight is about, do you want it just to be one of us? Or do you want to go out to see who in the public might want to represent us?
Okay, I, I would like to see us go out to the public. I can think of a couple of people who are extremely well qualified and I think would have a very sincere interest in the retirement of the military and the military and all. And so I think we would really be losing an opportunity if we did not go out to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gagliotti?
Same, exactly the same.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson?
Yep, absolutely. Totally agree. There's a lot of people out there that would just represent us really well.
Ms. Shirley?
I agree as well. Let's take it out.
Let's go to the public. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back. Anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we extend our our selection pool to the public as well as the electeds. And, and this is a question, and, and Mayor, you're actually going to make that selection and then bring that to us. Okay, fine. And so, so let's let's extend the, the selection pool to the public and electeds.
I say.
Or, okay. Karen, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Shirley? Hi. Councilmember Donaldson?
Hi.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lintel? Mayor Kerr?
Hi. So it passes unanimously. Thank you for that. So staff report? City manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. For the sake of brevity, I will state that my, the majority of my city manager support is in the packet and people can read that if they would like. I would like to, however, point out two things that have become official with the delivery of those awards. The Monterey County Peace Officers Association is an association of all the county's law enforcement agencies and its members. Yearly, they vote on awards such as Officer of the Year. That is split into large agencies, such as the county in Salinas, and then small agencies, your South County agencies and some of your agencies on the peninsula. Officer Chris Moore was selected as the countywide Officer of the Year for small agencies in the county. I don't believe the city has ever had that award bestowed upon them, a member of its, of its agency. Additionally, the Delray Oaks Police Department was selected as the Additionally, the Delray Oaks Police Department was selected as the agency, small agency of the year. So not only did we get the Officer of the Year, but our, our agency was selected as the small agency of the year for Monterey County, which again, I don't think we've ever had that honor. So that didn't make it in my report because they delivered the awards after that. But we're proud of the police department and the work they do.
Jeff, can I interrupt? Is there a celebration or something? Or was it just a handing out of awards?
This year, it's a handing out of awards.
Okay.
What we would like to do is perhaps have a presentation of the awards at next month's meeting. But I just wanted to put it out there that both the agency and Officer Moore were, were honored with those awards.
Nice. Was that all you wanted to say?
You can read the rest of it so that people can get some dinner.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure everybody knows that all of our council reports are in the packet. Mine unfortunately was late and Karen will get it into the meeting, the meeting minutes. All of the correspondence is also attached in the agenda packet. I just wanted to mention three upcoming things. My report is also in there. But that we will be having a budget committee meeting where we will review next year's fiscal budget on Wednesday, June 2nd at 11:00. We will be having a joint study session with the council and new planning commission, providing an overview of the housing element, including a zoning ordinance revision, arena numbers and an emergency shelter overlay. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that there's a public discussion on the 17th about foretag. Is that at 6 o'clock?
Mayor, that'll be at 6 o'clock. That is a TMC-led, foretagged public workshop on the foretag trial.
And, and will that be available through our links or through theirs?
They will have the link, but we will provide links to their link.
So will it be publicly announced, like all the other meetings?
Yes. Yeah, we, well, yeah, there, it's, it's their meeting to announce. But we will provide links on the city website and whatever media we can. Karen and Randy will work on that once they send out the final links.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much on that. Our next meeting is, in addition to all of those, our next regularly scheduled meeting is June 22nd at 6 o'clock. On that, we're adjourned and thank you all very much for a very full and productive meeting. Have a wonderful evening.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Bye bye.
Good night.